Thank you very much. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, September 19th, the year 2001. Council meetings are broadcast live on cable television, Channel 35, and on the internet, on www.lacity.org. Council meetings can also be heard via council phone. There's 10 members present. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernsen, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Normally, we only do this in the first meeting of the month by a request of several council members. I'd like for everybody to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to call forward the fire chief if he's here. Mr. Bumatri, would you please do the honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think certainly in this time, as the nation is looking to pull together, it's appropriate that we all stand together and reaffirm the commitment to our flag. Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves. Mr. Holden seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Zine moves. Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items requested to be continued. Item number 12, a request from Councilmember Reyes to continue that to Friday, which is September 21st.
Colleagues' request to continue item number 12 without objection.
Item number 28, a request from the city attorney to continue that to October 3rd.
Request to continue item number 28, also without objection.
Item number 35, a request from the CAO to continue that to September 25th.
Colleagues, item 35, without objection, that shall be continued.
A request from the Housing Department and Council District 1 on item number 41, also including item number 38, to remand those two items to the L.A. Housing Department.
Request to remand item number 41?
And 38.
And 48.
38.
38, excuse me, without objection.
And a request from the city attorney to withdraw two items from the closed session, item number 69A and 69C, and to return those to the city attorney's office.
69A and C, closed session items, without objection, we shall send those back to the city attorney's office.
Next item, Mr. President, on the agenda, there are several commissioners to confirm. Item number 14 is a confirmation of Keith Allen Neeson to the Industrial Development Authority.
We can ask him to come forward. Madam Clerk, has public hearing been held on the appointment?
Yes, Mr. President, committee reports are on the agenda.
Okay, colleagues, public hearing has been held on the appointment. Any members wishing to speak?
Item number 15 is also confirmation to remand to the L.A. Convention Center, and it's also a committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm right in support of Mr. Vinton's nomination. We were able to have some discussions in committee, Economic Development and Employment Committee. I think that... ...important ideas to marketing Los Angeles in a way that sometimes we fail to do in coordinating what the Convention Center does with their visitor bureau better. We also had a discussion about the Staples project committee and whether or not it might be appropriate to use public subsidy to do that. And just for the record, I was wondering if you would mind kind of stating your opinion about that element of the Staples entertainment development.
Yes, my position on it is that I'm fully in support of engine construction in downtown. And as to the form of subsidy, I do not know what form subsidy it would take, so I have no comment on that at this time.
And one other thing that doesn't necessarily have to do with the appointment today, but I think many of you are aware, I just spoke with Mrs. Zen before about the impact of the incidents in New York and Washington. Already, our hotels have been very hard hit. You know that all of our travel, our tourism, there are obviously security measures and a visitation town, but know that the mayor and I are going to be meeting today, and one of the things that we're going to be speaking about is how we can make sure that that business spot doesn't fall out where the hotel and the school here was just at the vital landmark on it. So I appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Any other members please? Seeing none. Mr. Ho.
Not very competitive with the other venues throughout the state of California. I propose to be creative in terms of changing that.
Well, I think you have to first realize what you have, and you market what you got, okay? You know, we can always build the biggest and grandest, but doesn't necessarily guarantee us that business will come to us. We have to utilize what we have now and make the maximum use of it, and then if the opportunity arise for an expansion to build bigger, I would not be opposed to that.
Well, that was, the idea was it was necessarily to be bigger.
At this point in time, I really do not know if it's necessary or not. I have not made that assessment. I don't have all the...
Let me just say this to you, for your information. When the Staples Center was being considered to be constructed?
Right.
The so-called experts, we pay them to be experts, convention experts, came before the council, and they said, "In order to be competitive, you need more convention space in order to get other kinds of conventions."
Right.
At this site.
Right.
Were you aware of that?
Yes, but can we, well, the question is, right now, we have spaces that are not fully utilized, and I think it would be wise to look at what we have on hand and market that, and then also simultaneously look at the expert suggestion on expanding the center.
Let me ask you another question. What about the hotels? I mean, the fact of the matter is that they won't come in because there's no hotel in the area, and the question was asked to you, should we, should public money be used in order to finance and subsidize in some part, bringing in a hotel into the area? And you said, "You're..." And you said, "You look at it when you see it," you know, you were not very definite about it in response. But a hotel is needed, is to be part of the complex. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am, but I'm not convinced that, you know, that the source of funding should necessarily be all from the public. We have to take a look, and what part is used for what?
The word is never "all." The word, we would never say "all." Some portion of it. Then that means you'll go for some portion of it, maybe.
I don't know. At this point in time, I have no idea what are we, what kind of subsidy we're talking about.
Let me just say this, to make it easy on you, you won't have a vote on that matter, we will, and we'll make the decision for you, and we think we do need the hotel. And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other members wishing to speak or ask questions of Mr. Zen? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Congratulations, Mr. Zen, knowing you did a good job.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items 16, 17, 18, and 19 are confirmations to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, and they have all had public hearings.
Will those commissioners or commission nominees please come forward? Madam Clerk, I understand there's one of the nominees who wasn't able to make it today?
Yes, Mr. President, that's Mr. Tony Lucenti, and that's item number 19.
Okay. Ms. Han, as Chair of the Committee, did you wish to speak first?
Yes, thank you. Mr. President and colleagues, I rise today in support of the nominees that the mayor has put forth for commissioners to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and want to just again stress the fact that we did have a good interview with the nominees in our committee on education in neighborhoods. I've had various conversations with the nominees, and I want to stress the fact that we are at a, in my opinion, a crisis point in the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and in the development of neighborhood councils throughout the city of Los Angeles, which, again, in my opinion, was one of the cornerstones of the new city charter, was the creation of this department and the creation of neighborhood councils. And while other commissioners in other departments clearly are there to guide their departments, to enforce policy, to take up where others have left off, it is this commission and it's this department that, in my opinion, will be groundbreaking, will be creating policy, will actually be defining a department, won't be taking up where others have left off, but will actually be forging new ground and a new frontier. I'm particularly concerned at this juncture with the application process, and I have heard nothing but complaints from those neighborhood councils throughout the city on the initial application that was created by the department. I believe we're going to be making some changes to that application, but I would like to know your opinion in terms of including the very stakeholders that we are attempting to certify in terms of their input in this application process, and whether or not at this point we're going to be able to change the application process in time to meet this October 1st deadline.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Okay, good morning. Council President Padilla and members of the city council. First of all, I'd like to say I'm so pleased to be here, and I'm honored to be able to serve our city and our community on the request of the mayor. I believe that the application, first of all, needs to be a succinct process so that people are not put through pages and pages of paperwork. I also believe that that application must include provisions so that every member of a neighborhood is included. That may include seniors, schools, churches, synagogues, undocumented citizens, and I really think it'd be wonderful if we had children in this process somewhere, where children could tell us about their neighborhoods, because children live in these neighborhoods, and they actually have some expectations of what they could be like. I look forward to working with the city council and the neighborhoods, and hoping to make this process a success, and will definitely want to look closely at the application to make sure that all members of the community are included, so that we can have a successful process and also have successful neighborhood councils.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilwoman Han and members of the council. Like my colleague here, I am very honored to have been nominated to serve on the board. To answer Councilwoman Han's question, I echo the thoughts of my colleague that there probably do need to be some changes to the application. I have some concerns that it's too complicated, first of all, and it's a cookie-cutter approach. Our neighborhoods are all very different, and I'd like to see a little bit more ability for a neighborhood council to maybe have an essay-question response, instead of just check the box, what percent? So I'd like to see some changes.
Members of council, thank you this morning for the opportunity to be here and to serve the city in this capacity. The application process that you referred to is one that is on a very short fuse at this point. We don't have a whole lot of time to rework it or to get to the point where we can continue to accept applications on October the 1st. So we're going to have to be as flexible as we can and as open as we can in that process, and encourage people to use the application to the best of their abilities and to accept them on the basis that we will continue to refine it, to redo it, rework it, and to go back to the stakeholders and ask for their input in that process. It's very important that the people who are out in the neighborhoods organizing today have a say and have input into the process of the development of the application. So far, that hasn't been the case, and we need to make provisions for that as we move forward. And as I tell everybody, this is an ongoing evolutionary and revolutionary process, and hopefully, we will in the end come up with neighborhood councils that will be effective and become an integral part of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of the nominations, and I want to tell my colleagues, I'm particularly excited for the city that Mr. Stone is going to be serving in this capacity, because I know that Mr. Stone professionally has developed an expertise in the area of computers and the internet and how we can, I mean, you've specifically worked in the area of using computers and the internet to make government and bureaucracies more effective and more efficient, and I would just suggest to you that I think that's one area where the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment really can use your input and your leadership to think about how we can make that department more accessible to people via the internet, how we can streamline its operations, how we can maybe even have neighborhood councils, one day, all of them, up and running, whether they have their own webpage or whatever. I don't know, Mr. Stone, whether you've given any preliminary thoughts to these issues already, if there are any thoughts you want to share with us in that regard, or if it's something you want to study once you're confirmed.
Thank you, Councilman Weiss, and I appreciate your support. I have given some thought to it already. I would like to spend a little bit more time going through the details. The council-approved plan for neighborhood councils and the charter envisions an early notification system, so there's already some thought about how to use technology. I think that can be expanded quite a bit, more than just giving a computer and email address to each neighborhood council. I like your idea of somehow linking neighborhood councils together. There's one, one major role would be to have the early notification system provide councils with notice on what happens in a particular decision or project. The other would be to have a neighborhood council from the west side be able to be linked to a neighborhood council from the valley, to the harbor area, to all different parts of the city. So I think there's a lot that we can do on that, and look forward to using my expertise in e-government to do that.
Well, I think we're all going to benefit from that. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, sir.
That's okay. If I might, Councilman, we already have an alliance of neighborhood councils which stretches from San Pedro to Chatsworth that's already in development and that has a website that has links to a variety of neighborhood councils around the city. Individual neighborhood councils are already developing their own websites in a number of cases, and there are links and abilities to communicate back and forth between all of the various entities. That's definitely an important piece of the puzzle as we go forward, including the mapping of neighborhood councils in a GIS format that will allow everyone to be able to find their own location within a neighborhood council. All of that technology needs to be applied to the evolution of neighborhood councils as we move forward.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
I support the mayor's recommendations on this and other commissions. I know, Jimmy Woods, you've run for public office and have been involved in city activities for many, many years. A concern that I have, there's no general manager for the department at this time. There's an acting general manager. You've got an October 1st deadline. You've got secession in the San Fernando Valley, which is very alive and well, and my concern is that this commission recognizes the mandate. As my experience with Councilmember Han and Councilmember Pacheco from the Charter Commission, we envisioned that this program would be up and running, and in many parts of my district in the San Fernando Valley, it's all fragmented. There's only one area in the San Fernando Valley in my district that has really come together with any type of structure, and I would encourage you that this requires great speed and concern to address those issues throughout the city, because what we envision in the charter, the new charter, is that this would be a nice, smooth operation, galvanizing, bringing these communities together and serving their needs. It hasn't been done, and with this void in the leadership of the general manager position, it really exacerbates the problem. So I just emphasize the concern I have on behalf of my constituents, that with November 2002 looming, which is the date for the secession vote, as well as the other concerns, and October 1st date, which was supposed to be the date for certification, everything's kind of in disarray. So I would encourage you, emphasize, and it's going to be a tenuous task for you to complete with the commission, but I will support the recommendations of the mayor and just encourage you to bring those to fruition so we can hopefully keep the city together and satisfy the needs of the voters that did support the new recommendation of charter, which was really carried through with neighborhood councils. So you've got a lot of burden on your shoulders, commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too also rise in support and would like to echo what Councilmember Zine said, which is that I don't think there's probably, with all due respect to the rest of the commissioners, a more important commission right now, and one that has a tighter deadline in terms of what it has to do. With that in mind, I also want to praise, I heard my colleague, Councilmember Han, speak this weekend at the Neighborhood Alliance, which I know Mr. Christopher was at as well, in which there's a lot of frustration out there. Part of it is the application, but another piece of it is the support. And I was wondering what sort of plan you each have for the next month or two to make sure that there's really the support necessary before certification. We're at the point where my own office is giving its resources to local potential neighborhood councils in an impartial way, for people just to get their copying done, to get their mailing done, et cetera, because we don't yet have enough of outreach centers. I know part of that is a budget question, but what sorts of innovative plans might you have to do that? And I'd like to retain the bounce of my time.
I think, Councilman, the question is one of as much physical support and emotional support to neighborhood councils as anything else. The frustration that I hear mostly in the community is that there's a disconnect still between the department and the people who are actually organizing, and there's a lack of understanding, which goes both ways. The people in the communities don't understand what the department is, what the structure of the department is and how it's supposed to function, and at the same time, the department personnel seem to have less than a full understanding of how the neighborhood people are actually going about doing their jobs. And to the extent that we can bring those two points of view together over the coming month and focus on how people can fill out the application to the best of their abilities, get it in to get the process started, and get the neighborhood council, the department organizers into a more symbiotic relationship with the organizers, I think we'll go a long way toward alleviating some of the anxieties that the organizers have at this point. The more that they can feel connected to the system, the better off they'll be, and I think it's our job in our individual areas to go to find those people and to help that connection to be made.
I believe that we serve as resources in helping our neighborhoods find the things that they need. Now, one of the things that's truly clearly, is clear, there's no money at this time for those councils, but we will be coming, I'm certain, to our council members, especially with the plans of the mayor, to have more power there and more funding there. We will need to make sure that those things are carried out and that those neighborhoods have the resources that the mayor has talked about in every neighborhood. I know presently we have an office in South L.A., but I believe that I envision an area in Watts, so that we have access for our neighbors and community people throughout every area, and they don't have to travel that far to get the resources. I began tonight with a meeting with the South Los Angeles coordinators. We have a meeting, and we will be going over what's going on, where we need to go. My first steps would be to personally put myself into this process totally, to make sure and ensure that our neighbors have what they need to operate, and if I don't have access to it, I know all the people who have access to it. So I will be coming to all of you, probably, asking for your support and assistance and helping us to remove roadblocks that may be stopping our neighbors from becoming empowered and helping them to make our city more effective and improving the quality of life for those citizens in their neighborhoods.
Councilman Garcetti, I agree with my colleague's comments about increased budget and that importance of that. One other innovative way to maybe look at this would be to go to some of the already organized council, neighborhood councils in the district that have gone through the process long before the charter changes, and build on some of that experience, transport some of that experience to other areas of the city. Information sharing, ability for folks to not have to reinvent the wheel, and one example would be the Soro Neighborhood Council that is both in Council District 10 and Council District 5 on the west side. They've done a great job, and they have a lot to share with other folks around the city.
Thank you, and I take your point.
And you know, could I just make a point? That District 8 also has a well-organized Neighborhood Empowerment Council, and we should not forget that they were one of the first groups to do that, and I attended their swearing-in of their offices on Friday night, and those people are extremely excited about the work that they're doing, but I'm sure that there still could probably be more support for them also.
Absolutely, and I think that we all have a burden in terms of finding those resources. It's not just a question for you. Perhaps it's appropriate in underserved parts of the city to look at CDBG funds as well as a way in the short term of finding some outreach and a place to spend those money, so I'll be doing that work. I'm really glad that what you said about youth, too, I think it's really critical and like to really impress upon each one of you that the next generation of our civic activists in this city are out there waiting to be involved with this process, and these will fail without young people involved. So I know that you share that philosophy, but I'm very glad to hear those words echoed. The last question that I have with my colleague, Councilmember Wax, not here today, I hope to take up this mantle nevertheless. This is a long-term question, but I wanted to hear your philosophy, because as I've studied neighborhood councils in other cities, really, truly, they are only successful, or are more successful certainly, when they are elected bodies with greater powers. And I'm wondering if this is something that longer term you are open to, just simply open to reexamining if the process as it exists right now hits some potholes?
Well, I envision neighborhood councils being, the officers and the leaders of that group being elected by the neighbors in those councils. That's my vision of a neighborhood council. So yes, I would be, I'm open to that, and I hope that that's what will happen in the process, is that neighbors will select their leaders, because they generally know the people in the neighborhoods better than anyone else, and those are the people who would represent them. But it's really clear and very important, though, that we make sure that everybody in those neighborhoods are participating, and that in underserved areas, we reach out to those people because of the fact that if, we don't want just certain areas to have representation. We want every neighborhood to be talking to the city council to get services and improve the quality of life, and I have traveled from the San Fernando Valley to Watts and San Pedro and the west side, east side of Los Angeles in the last few, this year, and I truly know that there are areas that seriously need to be empowered so that they can decide what they would like to have in their neighborhoods. And I know that elections generally work very well, and it brings to the top a person who the whole community can respect, and that's what I believe should happen.
Councilmember, when I first got involved with neighborhood councils back in 1986, we envisioned them for Los Angeles as elected bodies. we envisioned them for Los Angeles as elected bodies. There are a number of issues that go along with that, including the Voting Rights Act and other aspects of it. And we've come full circle to the point where we now have appointed involuntary bodies. I would hope that over time, as the evolution continues, that in fact they will become more and more responsive to the grassroots, probably through the form of elections in some way. How that will shake out is anybody's guess at this point, but that is definitely the goal that we should all be pointing toward.
And Councilman, one thing I'd like to add to both what my colleagues said was the mayor's new proposals and Councilwoman Han's motion to increase the powers, I think, are already underway. And I think that's an encouraging step in terms of neighborhood councils having review power over departments. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I simply rise to acknowledge the breadth and the depth of the commissioners as they bring their respective experiences to bear in terms of giving a strong shot in the arm of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. What we have is a real opportunity to do what, in all candor, hasn't been done. And I'm frankly anxious to see this department distinguish itself. When you look at a long-term educator and the person of Jimmy Wood Gray, who understands the issues of neighborhood, but also understands the issues of critical institutions in those neighborhoods, specifically schools, understands the connection of organized labor to communities as well as grassroots organizing, we have a strong chance to do what needs to be done. It's worth noting that her mother is an active member of the Empowerment Congress in the 8th District in the southeast area. It's also well to note that her daughter preceded her in terms of knowing this council person, as I had the pleasure of teaching her when I was a high school instructor. And so there's an intergenerational connection of depth, and that's what we need to make neighborhood councils real. Bill Christopher distinguishes himself as having served on several city commissions, particularly that of zoning and that of planning. When we think of Mary Louise Longoria, who served on the commission, is now being afforded the chance to serve again, working from the vantage point of the San Fernando Valley and human relations as a servant profession, we have a real, strong opportunity to get this done in a way that is meaningful. I appeal to the commissioners to play to their respective strengths based on their background and bring that together in such a way that this commission will be exemplary in every way, and then cause that to infuse or to permeate the staff of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment so that these neighborhood councils can cause participatory democracy to take root in the city of Los Angeles in ways that we have yet to see. So I commend you and am fully prepared to be supportive of your confirmation this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. I too, I also rise in support. I have a couple of questions, and you've touched on it, in terms of how we reach this diverse ethnic population of ours. But I really want to hear more about, in my time working with communities and organizing, I found it very challenging to reach those folks who are, who rent, who have demands on their time out of sheer survival. Folks are intimidated by public sessions because they don't speak English. You have a migratory pattern, immigrant communities that are surviving and will live where they can. Yet the decisions you will be making in concert with the folks that are participating, are there any measures, any steps, any strategies that you might have that can come in contact with this population base?
I think that neighborhood councils are keys to involving everyone in the community. It's generally in your neighborhood, usually from the house to the church to a larger group, that people will get involved in what's going on in their neighborhoods. I believe that by involving churches and schools, businesses, the seniors, labor, I cannot see that we would not reach out to every group and bring people in. Regardless of whether their first language is English or not, there should be people there who will translate for them. We should have materials that they can read. We should reach out in every way to everybody who is a part of that community. And I believe this is possible in our city because our city, being as diverse as it is, cannot function with only one section of the city. So we must make a special effort to translate everything that we put out, every piece of paper. We need to even have recruitment bulletins that we can pass out to people as we go to meetings to make them aware of the fact that there are things going on in the neighborhood and you need to be involved. We need to arrange meetings so that it's after work where people who go to work can come to meetings in the afternoon and make them available in locations where they can come and that they don't feel threatened. For instance, most people will go to a church, some people will not go to a church, some people will go to a synagogue, some people will not go there. We need to make them, put them in places where everyone feels comfortable and invite the whole community. And I totally believe in, being reared by my mother, that everyone has to be involved in everything. It's just a must that we have everyone involved. I participated in some of the block clubs in this past year, and at every block club, I was really amazed to see the diversity in these block clubs. So I do know that people will come out, but we do have to reach out with the neighborhood idea and make sure that they understand what it is that they have to contribute and know that they're not intimidated by whether or not they're documented or not documented. That's something that we have to make extremely clear.
I think the, one of the focuses of the neighborhood councils needs to be to work with locally-based organizations within the community. The scale of a neighborhood council, as we envision it today, is somewhere between 20,000 and probably 50,000 people. That's not necessarily going to work on a one-on-one individual basis, but can work effectively through the organizations that make up the neighborhood or make up the community. It's the individual organizations that will become the cornerstones or the core groups within the neighborhood councils. And through their networks and through their own outreach to their own constituents is the best way, or the best shot we have of actually reaching the groups that you're most concerned about. Having organized in this town for a long time, I understand completely the difficulty of reaching certain segments of the community. And it's really something that we have to spend time and money on and make sure that we reach into all aspects and all corners of all the communities of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Councilman Reyes, I think I would like to see our efforts in underserved communities focus on areas that have already been organized. Churches would be one, but schools, I think, most importantly, because folks have already come together in that area. They already have a commonality of interest. I think it gives us an ability to explain and help, help get more information out on why being involved in neighborhood councils makes sense and what's in it for somebody, if there's a way to show how it can be tied into the school in that neighborhood council or schools in that council, how to make school better, more safe. I think that's an important way to go.
There is a strong desire by-
Councilmember Reyes, may I add just one, something else that I did not add that I think is really crucial. I believe that this department is going to have to hire organizers also, organizers who will come from various cultural backgrounds and various language backgrounds so that they can go out and reach out to the people. It's not something that's going to happen without these organizers, and I believe that we need to hire the organizers. And that, of course, is going to be a cost factor, but I believe it's an essential one that we need if we want to be successful.
If I may suggest, the immigrant community works hard to become part of our society. And you will find, like at Evans Adult School, a large population base taking classes, English is second language. And just as a thought, we might consider engaging the teachers who are, who have an audience. These are parents, these are working people who block out incredible hours, early AM, late PM hours. Perhaps we can engage their curriculum so that the neighborhood council becomes part of the learning process, and it's a way to disseminate information regarding what it does, how it functions, what role it has, and engage the curriculum in such a way where it becomes a learning process. And that's what's the learning language and the developing and understanding for the material that is impacting their neighborhoods. I'm sorry, just one more question. How would you engage the council offices about decision-making processes? What's your view on that, or how would you do that?
Councilman Reyes, I think it's important that the commission and the department and the neighborhood councils work in partnership with the council offices. I think that through most of your offices already, there is quite a bit of organizing going on, that you're tied in particularly close to groups in your district. And I think that we need to play on those strengths and work in partnership with you.
I envision everyone working together in partnership. I envision councilmembers attending neighborhood council meetings so that when decisions are made, they're there as a resource also and can provide information. I believe the councilmembers are part of the neighborhood councils and, as well as the commissioners. So I believe that we should be there, and I think together we work successfully. Separate, no, but we must all work together to make this a successful effort.
Thank you, colleagues. There are three additional members wishing to speak. Let me just remind us all, this is our first day back from a recess. This is a long agenda, many important items on the agenda, including a special motion to receive a briefing from various city departments from the incidents and the city's response from last week. Also, a special joint meeting with our CRA and participation from the county, and I know they're under a timeline of about 11:30 today. I know these are important items, important confirmations, these are important questions that we're asking, but I would appreciate your brevity. Ms. Sikowsky.
I just rise to compliment the mayor on these appointees. As we've looked through critically other commission members and getting to know some of them, I am lucky enough to know at least two of these members, and actually Mr. Lucente as well, who we're also confirming today. And hearing from, about Mr. Stone's involvement and what he will be bringing to this commission is exciting. And I've been particularly pleased as I'm hearing these comments. And Ms. Gray, I think your comment was absolutely right to Mr. Reyes, and that is, councilmembers are not an organization different out there. They are part of the community councils. We will be going ourselves with staff, where Mr. Garcetti said that we are now being the bridge and doing copying and doing things like that. That's the kind of relationship I would hope that we could always turn to. First off, the department should be doing that, but if the department isn't able or a council office is more convenient, we should be able to do it too. And I've known Mr. Christopher for many, many years, and this is probably a dream come true for him because he's been active in this area, pulling together. And I thought his response to Mr. Weiss saying that, "We've already started. We haven't waited for the city to set up the neighborhood networks. We've already started." And so that alliance and strength is going to be fantastic. And I also just really got, have gotten the impression that you are not just commissioners who are going to sit at a commission meeting. You are going to be out and about and perhaps be one of the, perhaps the most activist commission membership of all of ours' commission, I think, in this day and age with this, the emphasis and the importance we're putting on this critical department. I compliment you, thank you, and I look forward to confirming you and working with you after you are confirmed.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I look forward to supporting all of you and the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. I just have one simple request. Since taking office, to my knowledge, there's not been an informational meeting regarding certification for neighborhood councils in the 9th Council District, and I would ask that you please give the constituents of the 9th Council District that opportunity. There has been one at the Constituent Services Center on Vermont, but I would specifically request that you do that for the 9th Council District since it's a very transit-dependent community and difficult for people to get around. So I hope that you will support me in that, and I look forward to voting for all of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Hello. This is the new layer of government, neighborhood councils. We have their mayor, he has power. We have a city council, they have power. Two layers of government. Now, another layer of government, neighborhood councils. What power do you perceive that the neighborhood councils would have in terms of influencing the direction of government?
I think, Councilman, the neighborhood councils, being an official member of the city family, will carry with it a certain level of importance that is not conveyed to neighborhood groups today. I think that having an official group which represents the official view of the city, of this particular neighborhood within the city, will carry more weight in city council and other deliberations than is currently attributed to some of the organizing groups that have been traditionally representing neighborhoods in the past. I hope that that will be the case. I also think that neighborhood councils will be around for a while. In the era of term limits that we have in city council these days, council members are limited to an eight-year term. Neighborhood councils are not limited in their terms at this-
Oh, they can replace them. I understand the hint. Next.
Councilman Holden, I think that, I answered a question before about the powers that the mayor has sought to give the neighborhood councils in terms of overseeing-
Can't give it to you, it's written, whatever it is.
But I was going to add another, another point, which is, the members of the neighborhood councils who will be springing up, it's not so much important that the neighborhood council itself has power, it's just that the members have power, and they already have the power to vote as voters. And hopefully, neighborhood council will give people a more unified voice on a particular topic.
I believe that, hello, Councilman Holden. I believe that neighborhood councils will provide a place where people can go to express themselves and make their desires and wishes known. They can have no more power than the council gives them. That's very clear. But we're hoping that through the council, that they will be willing to listen to their neighborhoods and understand that perhaps they don't want their trees trimmed, or maybe they want their alleys paved, or maybe they want speed bumps instead of whatever else the city may have decided, and will give them the leeway to say, "This is what we would like to have because we believe that this will improve the quality of life in our neighborhood." And it's the neighbors in those neighborhoods that clearly understand what they really need, and if they organize themselves, this is just a clear way of organizing neighborhoods so people understand where they can go and how they can go about making changes in their neighborhood. But clearly, the council has the last word.
All right. I just want to close out by saying, you have a very tough job. Now, we have about 200 block clubs and neighborhood watch clubs in my district. They tell me what to do, and I listen in terms of what's needed in the neighborhood. What a neighborhood council would do in addition to that, I don't really know, except convene and have more people hopefully show up at a meeting. You will discover that the people come to meetings only and only with, when there's an issue they want to rally around. But if you're already solving them, their problems, taking care of their neighborhoods, taking care of them, giving them top-notch service, they're not going to show up at the meetings. And so your job is going to be to hopefully inspire them, join with me and other members of the council to do that. When they discover that, what they decide, even though they're elected as members of neighborhood council, that their voices may or may not be heard by council members or that may or may not be listening, you see on land use and other things, they sometimes, they're listening, sometimes they don't. You can, you know, you generate an air of frustration perhaps. And it's, when summed up, they say, "Why are we here? We have no power." And what you say, yes, you do. You have your mouth, you have a vote, you have your issue, you have the community rallying around a certain issue, and that should influence the members of the council. If they don't, as has already been stated, they're term limited, you can vote them out. You organize to do that. And you know, you might want to acquire more power that, when there's a vacancy in the council, instead of calling a special election, let your neighborhood council, put that on the table to discuss, decide who's going to be the temporary person not to be, stand for election, but to represent the district while there's a vacancy. I mean, there are things that you can, you can be creative and innovative, and that won't be confrontational with the members of the council. I'll be gone with the fact of the matter is that they'll be here to tell you yes and no, and I'll be sitting on your side saying, "Do it, do it, do it." And the answer should be yes to something like that. There are so many things that you can do that have not even been considered, not even on the table, not even on the drawing board, about bringing, making that layer, level of government, now this new level, neighborhood council, being more effective, efficient, proficient, and contributing to a better life within our respective neighborhoods. I'm going to go for you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other members wishing to speak? Ms. Han to close.
Again, I would just like to ask all my colleagues to support the nominees for this commission, and I think you've heard that clearly while all commissions in the city are critical- And I think you've heard that clearly while all commissions in the city are critical, there is a lot riding on whether or not neighborhood councils become successful in the city in terms of how we move forward as a government and as a city. And Councilman Holden, in regards to what kind of power neighborhood councils will or will not have, to me, the issue is information and knowledge is power. And what has happened throughout the city is that decisions have been made that impact neighborhoods without them knowing about it, understanding the issue, and having the ability to weigh in on that decision. So knowledge is power. They will learn about city government. City government will have to respond to neighborhoods, and ultimately, I think that changes forever how we behave as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation of the commissioners. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fourth with on all commission confirmations today. Colleagues, we're going to take a break in the sequence of confirming commissioners for two very important and urgent items today. Let's proceed next to special one.
Special one, Mr. President, is a motion not on the agenda. It's presented by Council President Padilla and seconded by Council Member Miskowski. The city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The terrorist threat to our national security, including two incidents that happened in the last few days, has raised concerns over the adequacy of the local anti-terrorist preparedness, and therefore, the council is asking for a report today on the police, from police, fire, airports, and general services on the increased security measures and so that other measures may be implemented. The council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose before, after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act. And further, if the council decides that they need to go into closed session, they may do so pursuant to government code 54957.
Any questions on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Special one is now before us. Colleagues, we've chosen to take this out of order, out of respect for the time, valuable time of the various department heads who are with us today. And certainly, we hope that the report is not only on recommendations and a prospective look, but also a briefing on how the city has responded to the incidents in the course of the last week. So any questions on the motion itself? Seeing none, Mr. Rudy Thomas.
Mr. President, clarify for me what the intent is and how you see proceeding today. Is this a closed-session item? Are we going to take up the item immediately? What's the intent in terms of how we're pursuing? I just got this, and I'm wanting some clarification.
So, Mr. Rudy Thomas, we have representatives here from Police Department, Fire Department, our Emergency Preparedness Department, Airport, and other relevant departments and agencies for a briefing on what has transpired in the course of the last week as it pertains to the city. Some elements of the discussion may call for us to adjourn into closed session at an appropriate time, and we'll do so as advised by the city attorney and when those subject matters come about.
And this is in addition to the, or something over and above what has happened in the committees that have already heard this, this week?
Yes, in parts. Yet, I'm sure there will be some the same, some over and above. There's other council members who would not have an opportunity to participate yesterday.
Designed to give the whole council the benefit of what had happened in those two committees already.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the motion. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
The special one is now before us. We also have a matter that calls for a joint meeting of the council and the CRA. Mr. Reyes, I know we're under a tight timeline here. What kind of time do we have?
Well, I understand we have about 15 minutes to try to get through this joint committee if possible.
Okay, special one is before us, but let's take up item.
Mr. President, I was wondering, items, I believe 31 and 32 are two commission appointments to LASSA. And what I was going to ask with those two appointments, that they be referred to committee. We still have time. Mr. Garcetti is the chair of the acting, well, either Mr. Wax or Mr. Garcetti will hold a meeting in a timely manner. There's a question on the LASSA appointments about city residency, and I thought it would be better to have that discussed in committee if that was possible. I wonder if we could just take that action out of refer to committee.
Okay. Anybody from the mayor's office have an objection to that?
I discussed it with the mayor's office, and they had no problem.
Okay, then items, which numbers? 31 and 32 shall then be referred to committee. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, please, if I can have the members of the CRA Commission, please step up. You can begin these proceedings.
We're going to take item 29 next and hopefully dispense with it in the next 15 minutes or so, and then come back to special one. Appreciate the patience of the police, fire, and other departments that are here for special one.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Everybody in place? Item 29 is now before us, colleagues. This is a resumed joint public hearing of the city council and the Board of Commissioners of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles to consider the approval and adoption of the proposed First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Chinatown redevelopment project. This joint public hearing commenced on June 19th of this year and was recessed until today's date with the approval of both the city council and the Board of Commissioners for the limited purpose of hearing or receiving testimony, if any, from the County of Los Angeles regarding the proposed First Amendment. The First Amendment to the redevelopment plan is proposed to be approved and adopted pursuant to the community redevelopment law of the state of California. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members of the city council and the Community Redevelopment Agency?
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Rudy Thomas, Wax, Weiss, signed, Padilla. Eleven members present of the city council and the Community Redevelopment Agency Board. Peggy Moore, Javier Lopez, Greta Hutton, Kobe King, Douglas Ring, Christine Robert, and a quorum, Mr. President.
May I just correct the record? We do not have two of those members here this morning. Javier Lopez is not here, nor is Kobe King.
But we do have a quorum present. This is a time and place set for the resumed joint public hearing as set by the city clerk on June 19th, 2001. I now declare the joint public hearing on the proposed First Amendment to the Chinatown redevelopment plan resumed for the city council and the Community Redevelopment Agency, again, for the limited purpose of hearing or receiving testimony, if any, from the County of Los Angeles. Pursuant to law, it is my responsibility as council president to preside over this resumed joint public hearing. The community redevelopment law requires that we follow certain procedures in the conduct of today's joint public hearing. Persons from the County of Los Angeles making statements and comments are asked to direct them through me and will be given the opportunity to do so, subject to a time limit of two minutes per person. The order of procedure for today's joint public hearing will be as follows. First, agency staff will present a brief report of the history and background leading up to the proposed First Amendment to this Chinatown redevelopment plan and this resumed hearing. Second, agency staff will also present a brief summary of the agency's report to city council on the proposed First Amendment to this redevelopment plan. Next, we will receive any written statements submitted by the County of Los Angeles for this hearing. We will then receive any oral comments from the County of Los Angeles. After questions, comments, and objections have been responded to as needed, the Community Redevelopment Agency and the city council will then consider action on the items and matters before them. I will now call upon Mr. Richard Benbow, Deputy Administrator of the Agency, to begin the staff presentation.
Good morning. By way of background, this joint public hearing was commenced on June 19th, 2001. At that time, the agency administrator presented a staff report including background information of the First Amendment. All written objections to the proposed First Amendment were read into the record, and all public testimony for and against the proposed First Amendment was heard by the city council and the agency. The agency administrator and legal counsel responded to all comments and questions requiring a response. Binders were prepared by agency staff and provided to each council and agency member prior to the June 19th, 2001 hearing. Copies of those binders have been provided to all new council members, together with a copy of the transcript of the June 19th hearing. In addition, a copy of the transcript of the June 19th hearing has been provided to all council members who were seated on June 19th, 2001. Updated binders and transcripts have been reviewed by all currently seated council and agency members. This hearing was recessed until today to honor the request of the County of Los Angeles to continue to negotiate for a 90-day period regarding purported financial impacts to the county from the First Amendment. This hearing was recessed for the limited purpose of receiving testimony for any affected property owner or taxing agency who delivered a written objection prior to or at the June 19th hearing, and the joint public hearing was closed for all others. The County of Los Angeles was the only property owner or taxing agency who delivered a written objection prior to or the, prior to the June 19th hearing. Agency staff has prepared written responses to the county's written objections to the First Amendment, and at the conclusion of the joint public hearing, the agency board will request that by resolution, the city council formally adopt these written responses. I will now present information on the purpose of the First Amendment and give a summary of the report to council. My name is Richard Benbow, and I'm the Deputy Administrator for Business Management for the Community Redevelopment Agency. The action before you today is the resumption of the joint public hearing required by law prior to your consideration of the proposed First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Chinatown redevelopment project. The original redevelopment plan for the Chinatown redevelopment project was adopted by city council on June 23rd, 1980. In 1994, under the auspices of AB 1290, the city council amended project dates to reflect new end dates for receipt of tax increment, establishment of new debt, and project effectiveness. The Chinatown redevelopment project has reached its tax increment cap as of fiscal year 2000, 2001. As the Chinatown redevelopment plan will remain in effect until the year 2020, this necessitates a planned amendment to increase the established tax increment cap from $57 million to $230 million to carry out the original work program of the Chinatown redevelopment plan. The proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan before you today will extend the date to establish debt and confirm the dates for receipt of proxy, property tax increment and project effectiveness, as currently permitted by the California Community Redevelopment Law. Area conditions found through the document process are 30% of the project area's land uses are residential, 38% are office and commercial retail uses, 13% of the project areas in public and semi-public use, 65% of all office and commercial retail buildings continue to require repair ranging from moderate rehabilitation to extensive repair of dilapidated conditions. 71% of all residential buildings continue to require repair ranging from moderate rehabilitation to extensive repair of dilapidated conditions. The area suffers from extremely low lease rates, stagnant property values, vacant lots, and vacant buildings. 11% of all non-residential, non-public-use buildings exhibit vacancy rates of 20% or more. The proposed implementation tools to be used to address these conditions are summarized as follows. An economic development program consisting of acquisition funds for site assembly for commercial retail and industrial development, rehabilitation of buildings, and the creation of development incentive packages to encourage business investment. A housing development program to rehabilitate existing and provide new affordable housing for community residents. A cultural facility program to assist in the economic growth of Chinatown. A public improvements program, including the improvement and securing of city streets and alleys to include streetscape, upgrading and installation of security lighting in alleys, and programs to identify impediments to development and redevelopment of the area. A outside fiscal consultant has evaluated the potential resources, including tax increment available to fund implementation, and has concluded that the proposed project is financially feasible. All of the documentation supporting the adoption of the proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan, including the environmental impact report, is contained in the report to council that was previously submitted to you. Chinatown Community Advisory Committee conducted 103 meetings over the last 10 years, through which they and the community provided valuable input to the proposed amendment redevelopment plan and the implementation program. All CCAC meetings were posted, noticed, and opened to the public. At the public hearing held on June 19th, 2001, representatives of the Chinatown, pardon me, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles, the Chinatown Business Improvement District, the Chinatown Service Center, the First Chinese Baptist Church, the Wong Family Association, the Chinese Historical Society of Southern California, and the San Pedro Church spoke in support of the proposed First Amendment to the redevelopment plan, as did several individuals. Their statements are contained in the transcript of those proceedings, which were supplied to all members of the council and the agency board for review. The involvement of the Chinatown community has been greatly appreciated. A letter of support from the project area committee is contained in your binder at tab O. The letter supports the use of redevelopment and states the community's continued support for carrying out redevelopment in Chinatown. Since the adoption of the Chinatown redevelopment plan in 1980, dozens of projects have been completed in the project area, but all with the assistance and participation of the agency. These include the construction of the Chinatown Medical and Professional Center, Bamboo Plaza, Jade Pavilion, and the renovation of the Dragon Gate Best Western Hotel on the commercial front to the expansion of the Alpine Recreation Center, and improvements to the West Plaza housing. The continued presence of redevelopment is critical to leveraging additional private investment and will be crucial in ensuring development of opportunity sites for light industrial and commercial facilities in Chinatown near the Light Rail Station, as well as elsewhere in the project area. The adoption of the proposed First Amendment to the Chinatown redevelopment plan will allow the agency to continue efforts to attract public, private, and nonprofit partners to complete Chinatown's revitalization. All council and board members have been provided with updated information to reflect events which have occurred since June 19th, including the transcript of the June 19th public hearing. A new city council resolution, a revised ordinance, and a revised agency resolution. It is the new council resolution, revised ordinance, and revised agency resolution, along with the two council resolutions and one resolution of the agency previously provided in your binders, that staff recommends the agency and council adopt. The agency appreciates the assistance of the first council district office, the city's Department of Planning, and agency staff throughout the amendment process. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. At this time, are there any questions by members of the council or the agency? Seeing none, will the clerk proceed to read into the record the names and addresses of persons on behalf of the County of Los Angeles submitting written statements concerning the proposed amendment?
Mr. President, no written statements have been received from the county.
Okay. The proposed First Amendment to the redevelopment plan, the report to council, the staff presentation, and any other documents received are hereby made a part of the record, whether just received or received on June 19th of this year. We will now hear comments from the County of Los Angeles, if any. Please limit your remarks to two minutes per speaker. I actually have only one card from Los Angeles County, Mr. Robert Moran from the Chief Administrative Office of the County of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, my name is Robert Moran. I'm here to represent David Jansen, Chief Administrative Officer of the County of Los Angeles. What I would like to do this morning is just briefly express the county's objection to the adoption of the proposed amendment to the Chinatown redevelopment project. the adoption of the proposed amendment to the Chinatown redevelopment project. This morning, the county submitted to the city clerk two documents. The clerk indicated these were not received. They were they were indeed submitted this morning.
We are on receipt of those documents now.
Okay, thank you. All right. I will just briefly summarize the September 7 letter from David Jansen to Mr. Jerry Sharlin, and then read into the record the September 18 letter. In summary, the September 7 letter includes in detail the county's consultant report as to the objections, and summarizes the recommendations of the county as follows. Number one, the project should focus more on the redevelopment efforts in residential areas. Number two, the project should clearly define the remaining blight. Number three, there should be a feasible financial plan for the proposed projects, including a reasonable relationship between project costs and projected tax increment. And number four, a subsequent EIR should be prepared identifying mitigation measures.
If I could ask you to conclude, please.
Sure. I will quickly read, given the time and the opportunity, the letter of September 18. Dear Mr. Sharlin, in our September 7 letter to you, we summarize the county's concerns relating the proposed First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Chinatown project. The letter included detailed analysis of the proposal completed by our consultants. The September 7 letter addressed the methodologies used by your agency to determine blight, the nexus between redevelopment activities and blight alleviation, and the lack of an amended environmental impact report.
Thank you. We need to wrap it up here.
Wrapping up, in summary, there are two recommendations the county has made to the agency. Number one, minimize the fiscal impact of the amendment on the county by reducing the amount of the increase, the projected cap. The report suggests a more feasible financing scheme that relates projects' costs and potential tax increment, and would significantly decrease the amount of funds needed. A savings of over $50 million could be achieved by this simple expedient. And number two, and finally, revise the project to reduce the emphasis on commercial and industrial redevelopment projects where we believe you have not substantiated remaining blight. This reduction would further minimize the fiscal impact on the county and provide the funds for residential projects where we believe an accurate project assessment might well justify further redevelopment spending.
Thank you very much. And again, we are on receipt of that letter and will be duly
Thank you, Mr. President.
...added to the file. In addition to representative from the county, we have two speaker cards from members of the public. Again, let me remind you of the two-minute time limit. Mr. James Wong to be followed by Pete Kim. Mr. Wong and Mr. Kim. Two minutes, please. You may begin.
I'm James Wong. I'm director of the Wong Family Association. I come here, I need approval or disapproval. I just want to make a statement. Here you say you adopt a First Amendment. We don't know what the amendment contains. We ask people, they don't tell us what it is. So you're selling us something we don't know. And secondly, if you're going to implement the CRA in Chinatown, who's going to pay for it? You give up the money to do something big in a noble cause. Beautiful. But who's going to pay for it? We already paying too much taxes already. Last year, in 1999, we paid $7,300 property taxes. And because of the Chinatown bid in Chinatown, this year we have to pay over $14,000. Now, if you increase this, how much are we going to pay? And if we get the money, is the money go to Chinatown directly, or is that going to go to private investors? I just want to point out that you better think of it twice before where the money goes to.
Thank you very much.
And who's going to pay for it?
There will be an opportunity for those questions to be answered. Mr. Pete Kim, two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President and all members. I agree those are two just opposed to all these amendments. There are politics in Chinatown. Polly, in nothing means many. Takes, blood-sucking creatures. They always misleading the public, confuse the community, and let the community down. They are not thoroughly consulting the community. They employ some so-called consultant firms in San Diego to arrive this conclusion from their scunnies. You know, those BID stuff and all kind. This is not Mr. Reyes' problem. He just inherited it. So I wish Mr. Reyes can make some amendment or collections, or otherwise this will haunt him, the committee will haunt him for the future four to eight years. And I also wish all the panel members to thoroughly think about that. Put the community in mind, and I don't mistake the community. The committee wished all the investment in Chinatown, but they don't want to using the public fund for building their own castles.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
This concludes the public comment for this item. Does the agency staff wish to respond at this time to the written or oral statements and comments just presented?
Yes, we would like to do that, and I would like to have Mr. Murray Kane respond to the comments by the county.
Thank you. My name is Murray Kane from Kane, Baumer &amp; Berkman. We have been working with Dav LaSalle, Assistant City Attorney and General Counsel of the Redevelopment Agency on this matter. First, to take the county's points. The county has recommended that we clearly define the remaining blight in the project area. The agency has done exactly this, and it is before you in your binders. We have clearly shown the abandoned businesses, the excessive vacancies, the vacant lots with the rubble of buildings demolished decades ago, the private enterprise has not been able to rebuild, the excessive overcrowding. We have an opinion of economic blight from Katz Hollis, a leading fiscal and redevelopment consultant, that has been put in the record. We have overwhelming evidence of remaining blight. It is not necessary or required that the city council find that the entire project area is a blighted area. That was done when the project was adopted. All that is required is that there be a finding that there is significant remaining blight somewhere in the project area to justify the additional time and money that we're asking for to finish the project. And that is overwhelmingly documented in the record. The county indicates that we should, they have put forward a plan to, quote, "save $50 million." The way they, quote, "save $50 million" is by telling the city of Los Angeles, we should not have a cultural center in Chinatown. We should abandon the industrial and the commercial areas in Chinatown, which have excessive vacancies and business turnovers, and which have suffered from the economic blight that we have in the record. And that there is no nexus shown between, they are saying there's no nexus shown between our program to attack the blight and the blight itself. We have clearly laid out in the papers before you in the binder, a very detailed work program and implementation plan that adds up to approximately $57 million, which lays out an attack on eliminating the very blight that we have documented. So there's clearly a nexus in the record. They've indicated that we need a subsequent environmental impact report for the project. Redevelopment has a specific statute that applies under the California Environmental Quality Act only to redevelopment projects. That statute was ignored in the county's papers, Section 21090. It says that everything we do to carry out a redevelopment project is deemed to be one project. So the project before you today is the Chinatown redevelopment project. Now, that Chinatown redevelopment project has, first, a full environmental impact report, an environmental impact statement. Secondly, it has an addendum that was prepared this year to analyze whether or not there are substantial changes to the project or substantial new impacts but have not been previously analyzed. The conclusion clearly was that there is no substantial change to the project. We're not asking you today to amend the project, to expand the boundaries, to change any land uses, to change any intensities of uses. We simply want to finish up the project that was already fully analyzed in the existing environmental impact report. There's no disagreement with the county on what the criteria for a new environmental impact report is. It's whether or not there's substantial changes to the project. Clearly, there are none, and no subsequent environmental impact report is needed. The question was raised by the other persons testifying about they didn't know what the amendment is. We want to emphasize the over 100 meetings that was held with the Citizens Committee going over the First Amendment in detail for the last 18 months at least, if not longer. There will be no new taxes as a result of the First Amendment. So this is not a business improvement district where there's an additional assessment made. It's simply an amendment to the redevelopment project to extend the time and provide the money necessary to alleviate the blight. The money will go back into Chinatown to alleviate the blight. The county's fiscal concerns, first of all, we want to emphasize that the assessed value in Chinatown has been declining or is stagnant. And without redevelopment, we don't see that ending. So if the assessed value is not going to increase, we do not understand how we are taking money away from a county or any other taxing entity. If there's no redevelopment and the stagnancy remains, there simply won't be any increased tax base to share. We entered, the agency and the county entered into an agreement to divide up the tax base in the event of this project. The agreement contemplated that there could be an amendment, just like the one before you today. The agreement contemplated that if there was this kind of amendment, we would continue to pay to the county the same amount of money we have been paying to the county, as spelled out in that agreement, which we will do. So there is, again, no stepping away from the obligations of the agency. This kind of amendment was contemplated in the agreement with the county from the beginning, and we will continue to abide with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any final questions or comments by members of the City Council or the agency Mr. Holden.
No, anyone can answer this question. The county asked for a 90-day extension. Did you respond to that, yes or no?
Yes, they, we gave, you put this over for 90 days.
They said, starting September, saying that it should be held on September 19, 90 days.
June 19th to September 19th.
All right, fine. Now, let me ask you a question. How long has the redevelopment area been in effect?
Since 1980.
1980. And you froze the tax base at that time in 1980, correct? Yes, you froze the tax base. That's what the definition of
Except for the payments to the county that were negotiated.
I understand all that. My next question, then, what about the increase in property values since 1980 to the year 2001? And what percentage increase, if any, at all? Because you need to increase as we go increment taxes, pay down the debt. Hold my time, Mr. President.
Don's right over here.
Simple question.
Don Spivak.
Don Spivak.
Don.
What's been the increase in assessed value since the project was developed?
Don Spivak from the Community Redevelopment Agency. At the time of adoption, the base value is approximately $109 million. In the most recent year, it was $321 million, so it's approximately a tripling of the assessed value.
What's the incremental difference? What are you doing with it?
I'm sorry?
The difference, you know, the increment, tax increment, you use the difference from the base
Yes.
To what it is now, and you do what with that money?
Okay. Let me go over the numbers one more time, please. The base value is $109 million. The incremental value in fiscal year 2001, 2002 is $321.9 million, or total value of $431 million. The resources coming in from the project are approximately $3 million of net tax increment per year, which are used and have been used for carrying out the redevelopment project. There have been approximately 900 residential units that have been constructed, all affordable units. Several hundred affordable units have been rehabilitated, about two dozen commercial projects, including Bamboo Plaza, a retail and parking structure, and Jade Plaza. Public improvements to the Central Plaza and West Plaza, the construction of several additions to the Alpine Recreation Center, which is the only recreation facility and open space facility in the project area, an expansion to the Castalar Elementary School, and the construction of a public library, although a new library is now
Let me ask you a simple question. What percentage of the redevelopment area was considered blight at the time in 1980? Simple.
Yeah. The area was considered predominantly blighted. There is no percentage amount.
Or, but you've spent a lot of money and time improving it now, and you're saying in order to justify the extension, you still have remaining sufficient portion of the area that's still blighted, which you have not shown me on a map or anything, you know?
Yes, there is
Checking your word for it.
There is a map in the binder that pinpoints the few areas of improvement in the project
Mr. Reyes, you want this?
Counselor, you will see that we have a map that designates what areas have been worked on. It's very clear that there are still some incredible work to be done. The work that has been accomplished has worked as a catalyst to bring in investment, and have a whole series of projects that has been enumerated for you in the program in this presentation. But it's very clear to me that if we don't have this, we won't have that catalyst, we won't have that stimuli to continue bringing in more investment for Chinatown. It has shown, Mr. Spivak has given you a number of how much the assessed value has actually increased.
All right, then, I'm just going to close by saying that redevelopment law is very complicated, very complex, and not so easily understood. And after having said that, and an extension is being asked and apparently is going to be granted, the debt is going to be unended. It's like Mr. Renardi always said, you got to put a cap at some time, you got to stop at some point and say, it's going to be all right. Enough debt. But if you need stimuli or bringing more businesses to make all these things happen, if these projects are on the table, on the drawing board about to kick off, I have no problem with it. But I must tell you that this agency is supposed to shut down a long time ago, and it's still active. The fact of the matter is that, I guess, some of the projects they do is good and some they're not, but there's something to be looked into, Mr. Reyes.
Absolutely.
I'm going to support your project. I'm going to support this proposal before us. But I think for the committee that's responsible for this agency, you might have to have maybe some workshops, an overview, and have a better understanding, get a better grasp on what's going on. I think that the attorney for this CRA, he and I worked together on some legislation way back in Sacramento, and I know the pitfalls of the agency. You know, ups and downs, the problems that are inherent. And that's why I just simply raised a few questions, and all I can tell you is that nothing has changed, and maybe my vote won't change either.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Legal counsel, do any of the statements received into the record require further responses by the agency for consideration by the City Council?
No further responses are required.
Okay. As no further responses are required, this joint public hearing is now closed, and the joint public meeting will now continue. The agency and the City Council will now proceed to consider actions to adopt the proposed First Amendment. Does the agency wish to take action at this time?
Yes, we do. We have two resolutions. Each resolution requires its own separate motion and its own separate vote. The first resolution, a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles, California, certifying that the agency has reviewed and considered the information contained in the addendum to and final environmental impact report, final impact statement for the Chinatown redevelopment project, making certain findings regarding the environmental impacts, adopting a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and adopting a statement of overriding considerations. May I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Do I have a second? I have a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? So carried. Moving on to resolution number two, resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles, California, approving the proposed First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Chinatown redevelopment project, and the report to council thereon, authorizing the submission of the First Amendment to the Chinatown redevelopment plan, and the report to and the report to council, to the City Council of the City of Los Angeles, and making certain findings. May I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 No opposition, no abstentions, it's so carried. Mr. President and members of the City Council, the agency now submits to you the actions of the agency for your consideration in your actions to adopt the proposed First Amendment to the Chinatown redevelopment plan.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Reyes, do you have any motions to make?
Thank you, Council President. Members of the City Council. On behalf of my constituents in the Chinatown community, I rise today to speak in support of the residents and businesses, both tenants and property owners, and the numerous community organizations that comprise the neighborhood we all know as Chinatown. Today, I stand before you and as a state for the City of Los Angeles and the Chinatown community that we're not done yet. The Chinatown redevelopment project has made major first steps towards reducing blight, but more work is needed. The agency in concert with the community has a record of accomplishments and is in the forefront in the development of affordable housing, community institutional infrastructure improvements. But however, the job is not complete. More needs to be done towards eliminating blight, elimination of blight, and revitalizing the overall community economic development of Chinatown. I have a litany of accomplishments here, but I believe the staff has done a great job in describing those. So I'll move ahead and basically emphasize that without this stimuli, without this catalyst, we have incredible opportunities, given the investments of public agencies, such as the Passenger Blue Line Authority. We have the library being built. We have several major projects that have come online, the Gateway. And all of these types of investments will continue this trend towards improving Chinatown. So with that, I ask your support. I am proud to introduce the following resolutions and ordinance for consideration by the council. And if I may have some guidance, should I do each resolution? Or should we have a motion for each resolution, and then the ordinance?
You can do them all together if you wish.
Okay, we'll do that. So let me read each resolution, and we'll go with the ordinance, and then we can have one vote. First resolution is of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles, California, adopting RIN findings in response to each written objection of an affected property owner or taxing entity to the proposed First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Chinatown redevelopment project area. Second resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles, California, certifying that the City Council has reviewed and considered the information contained in the Addendum 2 and final environmental impact statement for the Chinatown redevelopment project, making certain findings regarding the environmental impacts, adopting a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and adopting a statement of overriding considerations. Third resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles, California, electing to receive the city's share of tax increment reimbursements from the Chinatown redevelopment project. And fourth, the ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles, California, approving and adopting the First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Chinatown redevelopment project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, we do have now three resolutions and one ordinance before us. We will take one vote on all four items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes. The three resolutions are therefore approved. The ordinance, since we are short of 12 members today, does carry over for one week for a second reading and a second vote. Let's send the resolutions forthwith to the mayor for signature, please. Ms. Moore, did you wish to say something?
No, we thank you very much, and we thank all of the agency staff and all of the staff in Chinatown for working so very diligently on this. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, and this concludes the actions for today on this particular item. We now go back to Special One colleagues that we had mentioned before, and as the department heads and other representatives come forward for their presentations, I'll call your attention also to Special Three today, which also deals specifically with the airport and air traffic situations and the changes that have taken place. So if we can ask for a presentation of the findings on Special Three and then a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the result of the attacks on September 11th, the National Air Transportation System was shut down, and flight operations are not restored to normal at this time and may be impacted in the foreseeable future. And on today, September 19th, the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee is going to be holding hearings and may be doing so right now. This is a resolution requesting that with the concurrence of the mayor, that the city include in its federal legislative program a position to request administrative, the administration and Congress to work together to quickly address the issues resulting from the crisis, especially to preserve the airport infrastructure. And I'm assuming that that has to do also with the financial issues and that the fact that the airport, the City of Los Angeles, is being impacted financially by this.
Any questions on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings for Special Three. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
So Special Three is now also before us. Department heads, please introduce yourself, and let's begin with the briefings and presentations. Let's start with Alice. She's the man in charge down there.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Ellis Stanley. I'm general manager of the Emergency Preparedness Department for the city.
Lydia Canard, Executive Director of Los Angeles World Airports.
Yobomontre, Fire Chief.
Commander Mark Leap, representing Bernard Parks, Chief of Police.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we thought that airports would give the most comprehensive briefing this morning in that we have not yet briefed the council or any of the committees. And first, on behalf of Los Angeles World Airport, the nearly 3,000 employees, we'd like to first express our deep sadness and shock by the unimaginable attack that occurred last week on the United States that was orchestrated through the aviation system. I'd like today to briefly describe the various actions taken by Los Angeles World Airports in response to the federal security mandates and an internal analysis of security concerns at our three airports, Los Angeles International Airport, Ontario International, and Vianai's General Aviation Airport. I'd also like to discuss the financial impacts of these new mandates. My remarks will fall into three categories. Our security response, our reopening plans, and the financial impacts. First, our security response. Within minutes of the attacks on September 11th and the Federal Aviation Administration ordered to shut down the National Air Traffic System, LAWA staff implemented emergency plans and set the following three goals. First, security, safety, and crowd control. The effect of public and community communications, and full and constant coordination with federal and local agencies, airlines, and airline tenants. LAX and Ontario passenger terminals were immediately closed, evacuated to the public. The evacuation of thousands of passengers, members of the public, airline and airline employees was orderly and without incident and completed by 9:00 a.m. Pacific Standard Time. By FAA's security mandate, all terminals were searched for explosives, weapons, and dangerous objects. K-9 teams were used in each terminal security sweep. No dangerous or explosive items were found, and all terminals were closed and cleared by approximately 3:00 p.m. To effectively communicate with the public, LAWA immediately opened a temporary media center. LAWA staff coordinated a series of news briefs to provide the latest information on airport security and operations to the public in a timely manner. This was critical to LAWA's effectiveness in advising the public of the security measures being implemented at our airports and the new operational procedures that were being mandated as a result of the reopening plans. Additionally, all media communications to the public were coordinated with the emergency operation centers, as well as all of our operations. As we began the reopening, LAX and Ontario reopened at 12:00 p.m. on Thursday, September 13. LAX and Ontario were among the first commercial airports in the country to be certified to be reopened. Van Nuys Airport also reopened on Thursday. The airports opened with limited airline operations and in compliance with the following new security measures. SkyCap curb jai check was discontinued. Only passengers with tickets or ticket confirmations are now allowed past security checkpoints. A ban was imposed on all knives and other cutting instruments. Traffic in LAX's central terminal area, also known as the CTA, was restricted to commercial vehicles such as taxis, shuttle buses, and courtesy vans. Parking structures in the CTA are also closed. The financial impacts of this tragedy are enormous. Based on the events of the past week, all airports, including Los Angeles World Airports, are realizing reduced revenues and substantially increased costs. LAWA, for example, is presently losing approximately $1.8 million per day. These losses are attributable to dramatically increased expenditures for security personnel and compliance with new security procedures, along with decreased revenues from parking, aircraft landing fees, and concessions. The reduction in airport parking concession activity will also have an impact on the city's general fund. The city's loss from the 10% airport-related parking tax is estimated at $18,000 per day. There are also occupancy and business taxes related to airport concession activity that will be reduced due to a reduction in airport concession activity. Finally, many of our buildings are now functionally obsolete based on the new security measures now required. We will have to evaluate the need for facility modifications to comply with these new safety and security measures. It is now LAWA's challenge to balance its priorities to effect the required changes in airport security and operations, and at the same time, find ways to facilitate convenient and competitive air service to the traveling public. In this effort, LAWA is working with the mayor's office to develop and recommend federal legislation that will make airports more secure. Chief among these recommendations will be the development of a federalized passenger and baggage screening function that would transfer this responsibility from the airline industry to the federal government. In conclusion, the terrorist attacks of the past week have had an indelible impact on the aviation world. Here in Los Angeles, we are greatly advantaged by the effectiveness and efficiency of the Emergency Operations Center and my colleagues, and in particular, Ellis Stanley and Chief Bemontre and Chief Parks. You should also be extremely proud, as I am, by the extraordinary focus, competency, and calm exhibited by our city employees, those at Los Angeles World Airports, Los Angeles Police Department, and Department of Transportation, as well as equally impressive efforts exhibited by our federal and state agencies, the FAA, the FBI, Highway Patrol, and Caltrans. I thank you so much for this opportunity to brief the City Council.
Thank you. Next presentation.
The police department activated its Department Operations Center within 20 minutes of the terrorist attacks on the 11th. Immediately thereafter, there was a call put into the Emergency Preparedness Department, who activated the city's Emergency Operations Center. The police department immediately put all of its personnel on tactical alert that allowed us to hold over the outgoing watches. That condition existed throughout the week and was canceled. It was not canceled until Monday evening at 6:00. With the activation of the Department's Operations Center, we reconfigured our patrol force, put all of our non-uniformed support detective personnel in uniform, activated our station's security plan, and reduced response to non-emergency or non-priority calls for service. Now, this enabled us to, in essence, redeploy uniform personnel to a special operations group under the command of the Department Operations Center. That special operations group was tasked with responding to high priority locations and high-risk locations, conducting risk assessments of those locations, making contact with the person in charge at those locations, and where needed, providing fixed post security. And this special operations group consisted of our Metropolitan Division, our special enforcement units from throughout the city, the bomb squad, our NA terrorist division, and a contingent of motorcycle officers. That operation continued on 12-hour watches throughout the period and was deactivated on Monday, September 17. Within a day of the event, it was obvious that the Department of Airports would need supplemental security. And the Los Angeles Police Department, working in close cooperation with the Chief of Police of the Department of Airports Police, put together an operations plan and a security plan to cover those security needs at Los Angeles International Airport. The LAPD has deployed, in essence, over 100 officers to the airport, and we are prepared to continue that commitment at least through the end of October. That also is on a 24-hour date basis. During the period, we did not have to mobilize the department. We were able to respond to this incident based on eight-hour watches. The only cancellation of any regularly scheduled vacations or days off were for the command officers, the captains and above. Throughout the incident, we were reevaluating our existing standing plans in light of the horrendous incident in New York. We are continuing with that effort, looking at it with a fresh set of eyes. And where necessary, we're making some changes. We have also tasked all of our 18 stations to develop an operations plan that is based on a tiered approach of deployment that will prepare the department to respond should any military action take place, which is anticipated in the next 30 to 90 days. Since the deactivation of the Emergency Operations Center on Monday at 6:00, the police department's operations center has remained activated and will remain so until September 27. That center is monitoring the deployment of officers at the airport and the deployment of resources in response to the numerous bomb threats that have been received during the past seven days. During the period from September 11th through September 16th, there was a 17% increase in calls for service. There was also a decrease in crime, approximately 26% from a year ago for that same period of time. The number of bomb threats increased dramatically and have leveled off and are now starting to subside. There were several noteworthy ones yesterday that I think everybody is aware of. We have not had any reports of anything of significance yet today. Looking into the future, the LAPD has been involved in a regional planning process with the County of Los Angeles to prepare operations plans for all types of terrorist attacks, and we will continue that effort. We also are involved in a early warning terrorist intelligence group that analyzes incoming intelligence and feeds that to our operation. And we will continue to assess our deployment and where necessary, create some heavy deployment days to meet... days to meet any anticipated events that might occur in the foreseeable future.
Okay. Thank you very much. Chief Bemantrey?
I think I'll start off with just a brief summary of our activities. Very similar to Police Department, the morning we were notified of the incident taking place in New York, we called back, held over the outgoing shift, we called back additional personnel, and implemented plans that were in place to initiate Department Command, staff up our responsibilities in Emergency Operations Center, as well as to augment the resources that we normally do and have in place for what we believe to be the escalating incident. Then through the next few days, we cooperated with the EOC and our responsibilities there. We experienced a little less than normal incident-level workload, which is not unusual in a situation where people are staying home and you don't have the traffic accidents and the normal workload that we experience. We then started to focus, as we were securing the city of Los Angeles and preparing for any event that might take place here, to fulfill some assistance and responsibilities that we have on a national level. We are participants in the Urban Search and Rescue National Response System, one of 28 national task forces. We were activated that Tuesday and went to New York on Wednesday, and our USAR team remains in New York. They'll be returning Friday, and their operations have been focused on the search and rescue efforts and securing the area so that the rescue workers are able to search out for any survivors in a safe environment. Additionally, on our own initiative, with the support of the mayor and the council, we sent a team of 23 Crisis Intervention Team members, chaplains, and grief counselors, to New York, and we were one of the first teams on scene. And in fact, when FEMA came in and set up a structure, they utilized our team to manage that structure, which they are currently doing now, in working with the families and the victims of the tragedy in New York, both in counseling and the notifications of family members. They will be there probably until September 27. They have been nationalized by FEMA, and all costs will be covered by FEMA. As we move forward into a response area now, which deals more with the anticipated response, national response, I get often asked a lot of questions of how well-prepared the city of Los Angeles is and how well-prepared are we, the fire department? And the answers are very clear: we are prepared and we can manage an incident. And I say that not out of a hollow experience, but rather out of the experience that has been born over the course of the last 10-year period. And all of you are well-aware of the city's response to earthquakes, the El Nino flooding situation, the firestorms of '93, the preparations around the Millennium celebrations, and certainly the civil disturbances, all examples of things that affected the city, not just in one area, but city-wide impact. So I think the confidence level should be there on the part of certainly the council, the mayor, and the community. But beyond this, this new threat of terrorism is a little different threat than we've ever had to deal with before. I currently sit on a task force, the International Fire Chiefs Association Terrorism Task Force, and for the last five years, we have been lobbying council and the president for money specifically directed at terrorism training because of our feeling that it would impact the first responders, police officers, and firefighters and rescue workers. Unfortunately, the tragedy in New York brought that home for all of us in the severe and sudden loss of life in the rescue workers, fire department, and police departments. Certainly, there's a national effort now to address some of those training needs and some of those preparation needs. Here in Los Angeles, I think as we move forward anticipating a response that will take place, I think that's a given. I think the unpredictability is what consequences will ensue after that response is taken. My advice has been is to increase the awareness, and certainly through intelligence reports and information, and working with all agencies of government, we are doing that. The other side of it is, if you look and really understand the threat of terrorism, it's not so much the specific incident. The purpose of that incident is to plant an anxiety and a fear in the public that would cause them to alter their normal state of behavior and to disrupt the types of things that have been reported by my colleagues, the financial impact, the impact on travel, certainly the daily impact and the broad impact that it can have. The way to combat that is through preparedness, no different than what we do for an earthquake or some of the other major emergencies that the city faces. I have been working internally and talking with Ellis about preparing the city family, city employees, as well as the community, to ramp back up their preparedness. I think it's not an unrealistic expectation that if another event happens, or isolated single events, the public should have the confidence that they can be self-sufficient for at least a 72 hours and perhaps about a seven-day period in the event that basic services may suffer some type of interruption. With that confidence, I think the normalcy will start to return, both here in the city as we prepare, and certainly the confidence of our employees to remain at their workstations through the duration of a subsequent event, but also, I think, out in the public where we can help to move them in the direction of returning to normalcy, knowing that they are prepared for any type of event that takes place. In some of the news coverage that you've seen, and they keep asking the terrorist experts, what's the likelihood of an event? And once again, the likelihood, the public is more at risk every time they get on the freeway in the morning, or every time they do some of the normal functions, and they are to be a victim of a terrorist event. It's that fear and anxiety that the terrorism, terrorists wants to instill in the community, and we need to combat that with positive preparation in the public and the positive communications that we continue to send out. That's our effort, and we'll be working to assist city employees in that, as well as the community.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity. I think we would all be remiss if we didn't say right up front that the continuity of government plan worked. Mr. President, you stepped in as the acting mayor. The city did not skip a beat, and we need to let your colleagues know that things went as they should have gone according to the plan. And I also like to thank those council members that did provide us some reassurance and allowed us to do our job as we activate it. It's important, as the chief has talked about, that when we talk about emergency preparedness in this city, it's very collaborative. I was commenting, when I walked into the EOC before 7:00 a.m., the first person I ran into was the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator from Animal Regulations, and they were there helping to activate the center. And I need you all to understand how broad our preparedness effort reaches in this city. We did activate early. The system worked. Many of you did not get the first calls because many of you are not supposed to get the first calls. The first calls are to go to those that we need in the response arena and to get this city up to speed and make sure that our programs are in place and that they are working and that system works. Part of what we are responsible for also is the mitigation, the preparedness and planning and the response and the recovery. And we are now going into that recovery process, and we are posting stuff on our web to share with parents on how to deal with the kids. We're also working with the mental health. We're working with the city's personnel, with the employment assistance programs, and all of those things are part and parcel of the process. Also part and parcel of that recovery process is for us to do a thorough assessment after the fact of those things, those learnings, or what I refer to as new learnings. Sometimes we learn the same thing over and over, and we don't ever do anything with it. But what can we now bring back before this body to effect some changes in the way the city of Los Angeles prepare and plan and the facilities and things that they're used? Three bills has come out since this thing occurred. Senate Bill 1429 is Airport and Seaport Terrorism Prevention Act, and H.R. 2888 is a $40 billion bill to give money into the immediate recovery and also make it available. There's also H.R. 1547, and that's to establish a grant program from the Department of Defense, the states and local governments, to assist in terrorism planning, et cetera. So we are on top of that. We're working with the CAO, campus, and all the departments to ask them to look outside of the box, look at what might be available to this city so that we can enhance our terrorism, anti-terrorism capability. I would also mention, as the chief did, the Gilmore Commission was a commission established by the 106th Congress, and they met here in Los Angeles in collaboration with the Rand Corporation and the county in which we work with for Terrorism Working Group, and they've established a report. So we are using all of these as tools so that we can enhance our capability to respond to these acts of violence. I also wanted to let you know that one of the things that we're doing is different, but we saw a need for it for this particular situation. We are staffing with the police departments, Departmental Operations Center, just to assist in a quicker ramp up if we have actions resulting from military actions, and we can get that done in a quicker basis. We have solicited from all the departments to work with the CAO to look at tools, equipment, training, et cetera, that we could get out of the grants. And we're also asking for the various departments to, in the regular process of after-action reports, to deal with any changes to plans that we might need to develop. Just like to say again, the plan worked, but the plan is a tool, the plan is, the process of planning is what makes this a great city to work in, and the fact that the people come together, collaborate, and we don't mind changing it. It's a living document. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all of you. As I said in the beginning, the purpose of this item today is to have run all the council members up to speed about how the city of LA was able to respond and what took place in the course of the last week, and to begin the discussion of what steps we can and/or should take to improve upon our processes and procedures, certainly our resources, for better preparation in the future. Now I'd like to call upon council members with questions and comments, beginning with Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has just begun, and that is our analysis, our need to focus. The city unfortunately has had some experience in needing to be trained, mostly in the area of natural disasters and the like, thanks to the help of Mr. Bernstein years ago, talking about earthquake preparedness. But that general word "preparedness" can apply across the board. I think what is of particular note is what you just said towards the end of your comments, Mr. Stanley, and collaborating and cooperating with the chief said, that there are task forces that have been established. The chief is a part of one nationally, dealing with specifically, looking at terrorist threats and readiness and capability of dealing with that. I think we saw, as Ms. Kennard indicated, that the first line of defense, at least in this incident, and perhaps others, will be in our airports and that security of the travel, since that seemed to be where so much focus went in the last week. I look forward to working with you. I think that the issues of particularly dealing with that issue of target hardening, security, increased security costs, ability to look at other potential sites that I know is probably been done through the fire department, as well as the work that you were talking about that was done in collaboration with the county. I have asked my staff, and I think you indicated you already had a copy of the report that was done at a federal level, submitted about six or seven months ago, on preparation and terrorist threat and what we should be doing about it nationally. And I'm sure that there are a number of issues in that report that should be brought to the attention of the city, and that if we haven't already looked at them as action points, we should, and we should have the committees capable of reacting to that quickly. I know that I was particularly pleased on Monday when we had the Public Safety Committee meeting and had a similar report in detail that the Information Technology and General Services Committee had already met and worked with a plan that had already been underway for dealing with security here in our public buildings, particularly our newly restored City Hall. So I look forward to the working with intensity with all of our agencies and bringing forward to the council those things that are necessary. And I am particularly pleased, I think, that there's been such a level of focus on this that is acknowledging that funding is going to be critical, but funding is important, and the capability of the federal government is going to be with us to help us look for those funding sources and those things that they are going to require, that for the protection of everybody, and I think, as the chief also said, restoring some degree of life and in the habits that we had known them can be returned with the extra degree and extra security that will be able to be provided.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo the comments of my colleague, Ms. Misakowski. And I do want you to know, Mr. Stanley, that today I introduced a motion to establish a city threat preparedness task force. The goal of the task force is to accomplish, in large part, what you've described, the process that's already underway. But frankly, I think it's necessary, but it's not sufficient, to just ask the city departments, "Well, how are you doing? What can you do better?" I think we need to add a layer of direction, a layer of robustness, and bring in more high-level decision-makers so that at the end of a 30-day period, the city has a comprehensive set of policy recommendations. We may need to bring in outside consultants as well. So I think the process of engaging the departments is good, but it doesn't go far enough. It doesn't, to my mind, capture the urgency which is appropriate at this time. And so that's why I've introduced that via Rule 16. Hopefully, we'll hear it and act on it next week. Now, this is the first time I've had a chance to hear from Ms. Kennard, and I appreciate her presentation. I want to ask you two specific questions based on what you said, and then reserve the balance of my time, if there is any. The first concerns my understanding that while the federal government has preemptive authority in the area of airport securities, essentially, they can establish a floor, but not a ceiling, for security measures. So when you say that you are working with the mayor's office to come up with potential federal legislation, there's a lot of federal legislation that I think all of us in this room agree is necessary, and there are 100 reasons why we might not get all the federal legislation. I think it's important to do more and to think about what we can and should do at the local level, regardless of whether the federal government acts precisely as we would wish it to act. So that's the first question. The second question is, if you could amplify in your comment that some of your buildings and facilities are obsolete. That's the first I've heard of that. I'd like to hear some more. Thank you.
Councilman, in response to your first question, I think we absolutely agree that the federal mandate should not be seen as a ceiling. And we have always taken that tact at Los Angeles World Airports. In fact, one of the reasons why we were the first certified is that our security procedures absolutely exceeded the federal mandates. For instance, we had always, for the last several years, posted security officers at our security checkpoints. Not a federal mandate, but certainly we thought was necessary to secure Los Angeles World Airports, and that is now a federal mandate. So you can be assured that we will be always looking at going beyond what the federal mandates will be. In response to your second question, obviously, we are in a period of great uncertainty and flux. We are, on a daily basis, receiving additional requirements from the FAA. How the ultimate mandates shake out, we're not certainly clear. We do know, for instance, that our parking structures cannot be occupied because they do not meet their 300-foot rule. You cannot have parking within 300 feet of the terminals because of explosive threats. There's a lot of additional infrastructure issues that we need to kind of evaluate as we go through. But again, bear in mind that the facilities at LAX in particular were substantially built in the 1960s and have not been significantly enhanced in terms of the shell and core space since that time. And the new security mandates certainly will require us to revisit our infrastructure needs.
Mr. Zane?
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I've heard people speak about terrorism. I haven't heard anyone mention the word "war," and that's what I heard the president of our country mention, that this was an act of war that took place in the United States by these individuals. And I think that when we notch it up to that degree, we've got our country mention, that this was an act of war that took place in the United States by these individuals. And I think that when we notch it up to that degree, we've got to look at the security concerns as being very, very urgent. Some concerns I have, when I sat on the committee, Information Technology and General Services, and also Public Safety, and heard the presentations, and now we're taking them boldly to the public, the concern I have regarding other airports, White man Airport, Hawthorne Airport, there are other local airports in our area, and I know that they're not under the Department of Airports' control, but I'm concerned that those facilities have some safeguards because they're on a smaller scale as far as airport operations, but it doesn't mean someone can't get to that facility and do some harm to people because they're right in our regions. Can you respond to that? And I've got a number of questions for you.
Certainly. As a matter of course, all airports, both commercial airports and general aviation airports, are under the purview for security purposes of the federal government. All airports have to meet all the federal security mandates, and certainly ours do, and I would suggest that the others that are operating in this area also do meet the federal mandates.
Are we working with them at all?
Absolutely. We are in constant contact, always, with our colleagues in the airport industry, not only here locally, but certainly on a national basis.
So White man, Hawthorne, and the other locales?
I would presume that they are meeting as well the federal security mandates.
Another concern I have on security, I know that security's been enhanced at LAX, and there's also, I understand, some private contract for security. Have those people been through some screening? The people who are currently providing security at LAX, in addition to our airport police officers and LAPD officers, the private contract security?
Absolutely. Everyone who is a badged employee, which we have about 40,000 employees on airport at LAX, are all badge. They go through a very extensive federal process of clearance, and you cannot receive a badge without clearing that federal process.
The other concern, you say taxis and shuttles have access to the interior. What type of security measures have been put in place to make sure those vehicles are not being driven by someone who has some ill intentions?
At the present time, as we had done previously to September 11th, we have extensive police presence at the curbside. That has absolutely been enhanced, and there's no vehicles of any types, except law enforcement, that can park at our curbside. So it's for drop-off only, and we have well-enforced provisions there and lots of security at curbside.
Additionally, you mentioned the concessions, and all the concessions are past the screening area. So there's going to be a financial impact to them as well as to the city. Are there any arrangements being made? I know the Congress is appropriating funding for airlines. Any appropriation to the airports, which obviously the city feeds off of the revenues in compensation for that or in consideration of that?
In most cases, you are correct that our concessions are beyond the security checkpoint. In some of our terminals, we do have some concessions that are not beyond security checkpoint. But at this point, of course, you must be a ticketed passenger to come into the airport. So there will be an economic impact. We have not been able to, at this point, evaluate the full impact, but we will be doing that in the days and weeks to come.
And for the chief, Berantree, I know that the, we discussed this in our Public Safety General Services, as far as fire equipment, the porch, the fire equipment, you make an order, and it takes 18 months to get equipment. I know New York lost a lot of their equipment. Has there been any consideration for some of our surplus equipment going on loan to New York to assist them while they need to maintain security for the city? I don't know how much their equipment was destroyed, but I understand considerable amount was.
Yeah, I think they're going to have to make an assessment of what they're going to do as short-term immediate emergency measures to ramp back up both their personnel and their equipment. We can certainly check into that. In most cases, part of our ability to augment our resources is based on retaining the serviceable apparatus in reserve so that, for example, on Tuesday, when we put additional resources in, we had 50 additional engine companies that we staffed, as well as 10 reserves, that basically are in the station in the event of a brush fire or something that requires additional resources. So beyond that, the apparatus that actually is not kept in reserve is salvageable and would not be adequate to send to other agencies. We have, in limited circumstances, with council motion, given those apparatus to, normally, it's lower economic level countries that don't have the level of apparatus that the United States maintains. So there probably is not a practical benefit that New York would derive from apparatus from here.
And just for Mr. Stanley, water and power, I know we haven't heard from water and power. The concern regarding the water supply, regarding the power supply, I know in other countries, when attacks have taken place, those are targets of attack. Has there been cooperation and coordinated effort with our water supply, with our power supply, and also the petroleum? We have a lot of petroleum distribution facilities. Have we taken precautions with those sites?
Mr. Zine, that's all part of what we call our critical infrastructure plan. And yes, the D W P were flying their sites during this whole process and to make sure that they were safe. And I would like to add to one other thing, this responsibility of the Emergency Preparedness Department as directed by the E O B, not just resources such as fire engines and stuff. Los Angeles has a lot of expertise, a lot of technical expertise in building and safety and D O T, many departments. And we are coordinating all of those requests or even going up for assessing how we can learn from those particular incidents so that everybody is not going independently, and that's being coordinated through us.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Okay, I just had one more question. Chief, I know that the firefighters, those that gave their lives for going to rescue people, I know we have first responders, police and fire, which are the first responders, and there's this concern about biological. Have we sufficient equipment within the fire department, I don't know about the police department, to our first responders who respond to a situation like that?
We have, on a regular basis, been purchasing that equipment. There are certainly additional lessons to be learned from New York, and part of the inertia, I think, was the lack of awareness of terrorism training and equipment requirements. Certainly, that is going to, that inertia, I think, is going to take a different direction now. So we are, there are some things that we were buying over time that I would advise that we purchase as soon as possible to increase our preparedness, and we are preparing those requests to come forward.
I thank you all for your appearance. Mr. Holden?
The public should know that the city is well-prepared after the incident, that New York, we roll out the plans here. Mr. Stanley, you'd be congratulated, and all of the others who prepared this city so well, with the expectation and anticipation should an event like what happened in New York or happened here, earthquake or whatever, we're ready. And the public should know we're ready. We talked about the plans, we had daily reports. Mr. Padilla was providing that information to the public, as you gave him the information, and I'm satisfied that it's all engines go, no matter what the situation is. I want to say, however, that I've talked to some of the people at the airport, operators, airlines, and they raised questions like, "We'd like to be up to 80% operation by a certain date or 60% or so on." But with some kind of, the security is very tight. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Once, one is what were we doing today that we were not doing yesterday, number one, in terms of security? I know a lot of B and C is drop-off points. We have an upper and lower tier drive-on, and I know you have some reasons why you don't want to do that, and of course, park in the general area. But at the same time, we're going to have to accommodate the airlines as well, to get the passengers from the drop-off point to boarding, and sometimes it shouldn't have to take two hours, two and a half hours, three hours. But because of the security plan in place, it's taken that kind of time. What can be done, if anything at all, in order to alleviate that? And why can't we use maybe the upper, the arrival area for drop-off, keep the lower-level arrival, the departure area, they could be used, the arrival area we could use for safety and security, and for other means as necessary as they arise? Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, Councilman Holden, I think there are three significant things that we are doing differently today than we didn't do on Monday, September 10th, that affect the traveling public. The first is the closure of the central terminal area, and the rationale behind that is twofold. First of all, there is a new rule out of the FAA that prohibits automobile parking from within 300 feet of any of the terminals. All of our parking structures and open lots violate that rule. That necessitated the closure of the central terminal area in that we have about 1,500 cars that circle an hour in the CTA. We absolutely, at least in these early stages, need to have full security and ability in the event of bomb threats or other emergencies to get around that CTA and not have to navigate through a lot of traffic. The other, second important change-
With the lower level, the arrival area provided that same access?
It's the same kind of situation.
Which you could prohibit them, the use of?
At this particular point, that is the rationale. I should say that because of our busing operation, and we have put that in place, we've enhanced it over the weekend. There is now an exclusive drop-off area in our Lot H off of Airport in Arbevida, and we're finding that within 10 minutes, you can drop off and get into the central terminal area. So the wait times are really de minimis. You can also take a private taxi, a limousine or shuttle service or bus into the airport. And once you get into the central terminal area, because there is virtually no private vehicle traffic, the loop time is dramatically reduced, as from what we saw even on Monday. The second major change for the traveling public is that now you cannot check your baggage at curbside. That is creating some delays at the ticket counters. Everyone now must go to the ticket counters for check-in. The third major delay, as you can well imagine, there is a heightened sense of security at the security checkpoints, a variety of new measures and screening, and that is causing some delays at the security checkpoints as well. However, we're finding, as of today, that people are being able to move in and out through our airport much better than they were on Thursday when we opened up, and we hope to be refining our procedures and making it much more convenient in the days and weeks that come for the traveling public.
One final question. What kind of apparatus of any, parts of any illegal, I would say, devices of any, have you been able to confiscate that would have gone through before that you're catching now? Can we summarize that, please?
It's very interesting. There is a multiplicity of things that you could have brought on to an airplane on Monday, the 10th, which you cannot, no longer. We have confiscated a myriad of things that are seemingly innocuous, scissors, nail files, things that people are really not aware of or thinking that they would be dangerous weapons are now considered dangerous weapons. So we'd like to encourage, obviously, the traveling public to just be wary of what you have in your carry-on baggage as you go through those security checks.
Hammer?
Hammers.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I too want to congratulate everyone here today, these departments especially, but to all the departments in the city for their great response, their quick response, their willingness this week to really show the rest of us how much we as a city really are prepared for this kind of emergency. Mr. Stanley and I have had this conversation. I don't want us to forget the port of Los Angeles in our discussions, because I was one of the first areas where I was nervous about as being our second-largest port of entry. And hopefully, we're going to have ongoing discussions about how we keep heightened security in that area as well. I have a few questions for Ms. Kennard, but I just wanted to say, I also have, we have a motion before us, colleagues. It's special 3A, and it also is asking Congress to address the issue, not only of just our airport, but of the airlines. And while the airport is losing $1.8 million a day, I'm understanding that the airlines are losing $10 million per hour, and up to this point have already lost $5 billion since the incident happened. And clearly, while at the same time we're asking Congress to address how this crisis has impacted our airport, I hope you will agree that we should also ask Congress to address how this has impacted our airlines, because clearly, that's also a huge part of our economy here locally, and I hope you agree to that. And I'd like you, Ms. Kennard, for you to speak about Congress addressing our airline industry as well. But I'm also concerned about the security at the airport. And you did answer one of my questions. I was going to ask you to address the issue of curbside drop-off and pickup, as I was having a hard time understanding how that really impacted the ability of terrorists to overtake one of our airplanes. And I think that's what was so difficult about this, is who would have thought they would have used one of our own airlines as a weapon against us? And I think that's what has been particularly troubling for us. My concern is still the security check-in, the X-ray machines, and wondering how we're going forward in terms of maybe possibly having federal employees staff that. Are we looking at the actual X-ray machines to upgrade their ability to detect potential weapons? And that's, to me, still where the weak link is, is those security check-in points, more than necessarily curbside drop-off and pickup and parking. And one more thing, it's my understanding that we were always not allowed to have parking within 300 feet, but we've attempted to get federal waivers. Is that, I heard that. Is that true or not true? And then you can talk to some of the other issues.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
If I could answer, I think, what I believe to be three questions. One is, what is our position with respect to the airline industry and their current economic situation as a result of this tragedy? Obviously, it's very severe. It has a multiplicity of secondary effects, certainly, first and foremost, on the employees. You're probably hearing that there are tremendous amounts of furloughs and/or layoffs as a result of this. And certainly, we're trying to do everything we can to minimize them from our standpoint, but they are inevitable as the industry takes a very, very big hit financially. Your second question, I think, I believe, was with respect to the X-ray machines. At Los Angeles World Airport, we have certainly the state-of-the-art magnetometers in all of our terminals. And as new technology emerges, certainly, we will hopefully be on the cutting edge of receiving that kind of, that kind of technology. As I indicated in my early remarks, we are very interested, as many of our other airport colleagues around the country, in reevaluating how the security checkpoint personnel and process works. We are working with the mayor's office to try to figure out whether federalization of that process is appropriate. Again, it is probably too early to really have a definitive answer, but rest assured that we are, we are working with all of our legislative bodies to try to come to some appropriate answers.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to praise the work of all the departments. It was the first time, as a new council member, that I saw Emergency Operations Center in work, and I think it was incredibly impressive and gave me a lot of faith, also my colleagues all being there and really jumping. Though I think some of the communication, I know we're not necessarily supposed to always get the first call, though I do think it's important for us to have some sort of formal protocol to let each other know, because we deal with a lot of the public reaching out to us in those moments. So I would urge you to work with the C L A, perhaps, to make sure that that is done. A few quick points. I think in terms of our structural preparedness, we are there. A second point, which doesn't necessarily apply to the four of you directly, but some, a point that I'd like to make in this forum is our moral preparedness. And I was very moved by your speech on Sunday, chief. And I know a number of the speakers and a number of our city leaders really impressed upon people to make sure that this wasn't a time to turn against each other. And I think it's been a moment for our country that we didn't have secondary players. It wasn't the second or third or fourth thought to mention that we not turn against each other, but it was primary from the president on down, and that that moral preparedness was something that we should not and did not overlook. In terms of our economic preparedness, and I know we've already touched on this, you know, as the chair of Economic Development and Employment, it's something that I'm asking my office to look at, to work with the airport at, but I think it's something that we all should think about, colleagues, is how we have some sort of system for economic displacement. I'm meeting with the mayor later this week about this, and I spoke with the governor on Sunday, and he's considering some things which I urge you to urge him to do, including freeing up some of the requirements for getting unemployment insurance for those folks who are displaced, and make sure that the short-term economic impact on individuals and their jobs is minimized as well, as well, excuse me. And if you have any suggestions, colleagues, in terms of some of the economic impact, we're going to try to coordinate that and come up with an idea to do that. In closing, I just wanted to make a brief statement. There's a quote I can't get out of my head that I shared with my staff on Friday, that a French writer, Ernst Rannan, wrote, "The nation is a daily plebiscite." And not just to thank you for your work, but also to thank the people of Los Angeles, that it's important. It's ironic that this happened on Election Day here in Los Angeles. It's ironic that this happened on Election Day here in Los Angeles, and we choose not just to vote on election days, but each and every day by participating in this society and in the government and making sure that it continues. I really urge Angelenos to continue in every way with their daily work. It is the only way we'll be able to address some of the economic impact, some of the moral and psychological terror that it has wreaked upon us, but I thank you all for continuing to vote with your feet each and every day.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
In no way do I want to de-emphasize the safety issue, but, Ms. Kennard, I wanted to understand more about how we're dealing with the skycabs, the taxi drivers, the restaurant workers, the folks who are being displaced specifically, not just the general economic impact, but specifically the employees that we have. We've gone through a lot of work with the unions, and I want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on it as we go through our safety issues.
I think the good news is the airport is reopened, and people are getting back to work. We're still not sure, of course, what the ultimate employment impact will be. We're doing, at Los Angeles World Airport, what we can to assist some of the private employees, for instance, the skycabs. We've asked them to go over to our drop-off lots and pickup lots to help people with baggage so that they can get back, not fully employed, but certainly, it's a help. And on a day-to-day basis, we're doing whatever we can. I think it'll be several weeks before we can realize and fully understand the full impacts in terms of employment of this tragedy.
Any other members wishing to speak or ask questions on this item? Seeing none, I believe the appropriate action is to receive and file your reports today, and I certainly would encourage the Public Safety Committee to continue the discussion about further preparations and planning for incidents like this in the city of Los Angeles. That would be the case for item number one. We also have item number three with an amendment before us. Shall we take a vote on Item 3A, the amendment, first? Madam Clerk, please open the roll on Item 3A. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That amendment is adopted. So let's proceed with taking a vote for Item Special 3. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item 3, as amended, is adopted. And without objection, we shall receive and file Special 1. I want to thank all four of you for coming today and for your presentations, and really, to all of you and everybody in your departments, I especially want to thank you for the excellent work all of last week, not only the immediate response, but all of last week. And on an ongoing basis, I know our Emergency Operations Center is still active, and if I can ask Lydia and Ellis to, one more time, repeat the 1-800 numbers and its website for more information for the public.
Our website is www.lawa.org, and you can get continuing information about the status of the airport.
Our website is updateLA.org. That will get you all the information, all the numbers for donations of approved donation sites, updateLA.org.
Thank you very much. And forthwith on Special 3. Next item, please.
Mr. President, before continuing with the agenda, there are several items also requested to be continued. Item number six, a request to continue that by Councilmember Reyes to September 21st, which is Friday.
Colleagues, without objection, Item Number 6 is continued.
Item number 27, a request by Councilmember Perry to continue that to October 19th.
Mr. Pacheco on Item 27?
Excuse me. It's actually on behalf of Councilmember Galanter. It's Item Number 27.
Okay. Without objection, Item 27 is continued. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, if it's appropriate, because we do have some guests from Assemblymember Sadio's office, as soon as it's convenient for yourself and the clerk, can we take up Special 2?
Okay. Don't think we have a problem with that. Let's continue with the requests to continue first.
Okay. Item Number 69B, it's a closed-session item, a request to continue that to Friday, September 21st.
Is that 69B or D?
B, as in boy.
Okay. Item B is continued.
And also 69D, a request to continue that to next Wednesday, September 26th.
Okay. Also continued, and I believe that dispenses with the closed session.
Yes, Mr. President. Do you wish to take up Special 2 now or proceed with the-
Before we do that, Mr. Reyes.
Council President, if I may, continue Item 11 for three weeks.
Item Number 11, colleagues, without objection. And yes, Madam Clerk, let's proceed to Special 2 at this time.
Okay. Mr. President, that's an item not on the agenda. It's a motion presented by Councilmember Pacheco, excuse me, seconded by Councilmembers Reyes and yourself, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under California law, all California driver's licenses, in order to get one, you must submit proof of presence in the United States being authorized under federal law, and you must submit a social security number. This has created unintended consequences for law enforcement, and this is a bill, AB-60, which is working its way through, which asks to rescind those. It is my understanding that Assemblymember Sadio has indicated to Councilmember Pacheco that it is necessary to have support of this by Friday, and therefore, the council needs to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Anybody wishing to speak on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the finding. Mr. Holden? Yes, you do. You are correct. You can count. Want to stand up and speak into the microphone, please?
I just want to know what the urgency is, number one. I think I heard you say that, but I'm more interested in talking about the content of the proposed legislation and the effect it's going to have on security.
Well, let's take a vote first then on the findings. That deals directly with the urgency, and then we can open discussion on the subject matter itself. Mr. Pacheco.
I was simply going to, Mr. President, and colleagues, answer my colleague's question. I had a conversation with Assemblymember Sadio. This is on the governor's desk. The governor wants to make a decision quickly and soon, has told us, or told the Assemblymember who shared it with me, that he wants to make a decision by Friday, so he wants to see if there's broad-based support throughout the state. That's why we need to urgently address this and communicate our support, or whatever the outcome of the vote may be, but we need to communicate our position on this matter to him before Friday. I want to get it done today so that he can have it before Friday. So that was the urgency in terms of getting it before us today.
Right. So on my time, this matter's been before the governor, before the governor vetoed, and what's the governor's veto message? Why did the governor veto this piece of legislation? So I've been told. And what is the veto message? They will know where we stand on this measure, no matter, notwithstanding what opposition is.
The fact that the, this is on the urgency issue.
Yes.
The fact that the governor has communicated to the Assemblymember that he is open to signing it this time, but he wants to see broad-based support through the state, and he wants to see it by Friday, is why we need to act on it today. I can answer the questions once we get to the prior veto message, once we get to the debate on the merits, but I just want to make sure we legally go through the urgency first.
As long as you have the veto message, I want to see that.
Mr. Zine on the findings?
I'm confused as to the urgency of this without having public safety, without hearing from the police department. I mean, if they want it by Friday and they give it to us at the last minute, why they didn't bring it to us before? It concerns me. I want to hear from some experts, other than the piece of paper I have regarding the urgency, and the governor's saying, I need to know by Friday, and today is Wednesday? It's like, this bill came up in the past, and it didn't pass, and I think there's some experts that we want to hear from, whether here or in committee. We can expedite it, but I think it's inappropriate to put us under a squeeze this tight and say it's urgent when this has been lingering around for two years, and all of a sudden we need to do it right now. And I think it should be at least public safety to hear the concerns about from the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. This item actually was considered in rules, elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee this morning. Ms. Zikowska, did you wish to speak?
I think that was in committee today. We were trying to get the committee report up. We had heard that it was on the governor's desk, and the governor may not be looking to signing until mid-October, and although we still, in committee, directed to come forth with to the council the next available council date. Mr. Pacheco has learned that, in fact, on this bill, the governor is looking to act on it quickly, Friday, so that's, I think, the difference between this morning in committee and now. But in committee, it was reported that the law enforcement agencies have strongly backed this bill. Mr. Pacheco did testify and indicated why their, what their concern was in favor of it, indicating their support in terms of having identity. But I think that the, obviously, the urgency is word from Mr. Sadio's office that the governor wants a view, so at least let's make the findings and then have the debate.
I think it is appropriate to make the findings, put the subject matter before us, and then have the discussion before a vote on the subject matter itself. Mr. Garcetti.
You took the words out of my mouth, that we find the findings, that we can move on to the-
I can see it from here. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special 2 is now before us. Mr. Pacheco is the author.
First of all, I want to start out, Mr. President, by addressing some of the questions that were raised by my colleague, Mr. Zine, from the law enforcement perspective. This initiative has primarily been brought to my attention, and one of the reasons why I support it is because of a public safety perspective on many levels. The first level is, we want to make sure that any individual on the road, I think it's in our best interest to have those individuals licensed, in the sense that we know that they're skilled to drive the automobile, and more importantly, from my perspective also, is that they be insured so that in case of an accident, we do have some mechanism of making the other parties that are not responsible for the accident whole. Also, the other front is that the police departments and law enforcement firmly support this bill because when they pull someone over, they're in a much better position to determine any warrant status or any sort of outstanding issues with this individual, if we can get them somehow documented with an ID, either through the photo ID or the driver's license. So we want to know who we're dealing with from that standpoint, and furthermore, it's our understanding that there's also a deterrent effect in terms of hidden runs if we have more licensed individuals. One of the problems that we run into with unlicensed drivers is they tend to flee accident scenes, and we want to make sure that that gets reduced, because that's obviously in no one's best interest to have people fleeing a crime scene. So these are all the public safety areas that we want to improve. And finally, I believe that with the new digital imaging that we have available at the DMV, it really eliminates the possibility of anyone using someone else's name or identity because you have the thumbprint and the photo done simultaneously. I'm not sure if you got a new license lately, but when you go in there, they digitize your thumbprint, and they give you a digital image to make sure that you're the same person. That will help us immensely if we ever need to find out who someone is under any circumstances. Obviously, with the modern computer technology, whether you want to work off a thumbprint in terms of matching someone, or the new imaging that they've done, as you may know, they had that whole recent controversy at the Super Bowl where they were scamming, imaging the crowd, looking for people based on the face. So we have two tools in front of us for public safety, and I would urge support of the motion. And we do have a speaker from Assemblymember Sadio's office who would like to, if, with your permission, Mr. President, give us a small presentation.
Sure. Before calling on the next member, we only have one card, and it is for either Tony Rukaza, Iris Miranda, or Dan Farkas from Assemblymember Sadio's office.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of City Council, and thank you, Councilmember Nick Pacheco. We're here to answer any questions that you may have. Again, the councilman was eloquent in stating the objective of this bill, which is primarily a public safety issue, and I won't be redundant and go into that. So we're here to want to serve the public. As the assemblyman says, the number-one duty of government is public safety, and this issue deals with everybody, all Californians. And one thing I just want to bring up, there are people here that we watch almost every season that are on our sports teams, from the L.A. Kings to the L.A. Galaxy, who are unable today to use their vehicles because they can't get a driver's license. There are academic researchers, there are executives that are around our buildings downtown that maybe some of them could afford a driver, but they can't drive themselves. So this is a public safety issue, and we appreciate your support, and we urge an aye vote.
Mr. Reyes.
During these times of census, when we need to have a way to count for people who live in our city, this would be one more vehicle that we could use to start accounting for the folks that we have on our streets. City LA has been penalized because we have not been accounted for at the level and at the manner that we need, so that we can qualify, if you will, for those federal resources that would supplement and address the needs that we have in our neighborhoods that have a preponderance of folks who essentially tend to be dealt with as if they are invisible. So I think this is one more method by which we can help the accounting process for that.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I urge you to pass this. This is good not just for public safety, but a number of other reasons. Just to give you an idea of some of the support for this, all the chambers of commerce have supported this, law enforcement groups have supported this, the insurance industry has supported this. It isn't just even about public safety, too. You can look at some of the provisions that, because the governor wanted to make sure that they were in there, that I, in the sheet that I just gave you, Councilmember Holden, some of the provisions include strengthening our child support, so this helps us with our anti-poverty efforts, also looking at welfare fraud and the TANF requirements. I think this is airtight. It also allows us to do a number of things which aren't just about public safety. Those have already been enumerated. I support this for that reason, but I think there's manifold reasons on top of that to support this, and I urge all of your support. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
The question should be asked, why was a social security number required early on before you can get a driver's license? Why was that a requirement? Got to be a reason.
Sure.
And if you are a sports participant and you are working in the U.S., you're not prohibited from getting a social security number because you're going to pay your taxes. Get one, and then you can get a driver's license and drive. So I don't see that at all as being a deterrent, period, of a method to prevent you from getting a driver's license. We got a tight security going on right now in the U.S., and I'm not willing to open the door up at all anymore. If you have a green card, you can be a, you can, you're a sports figure, because you got to have a green card to be a sport, you play baseball, or hockey, or whatever you're going to play, you get a driver's license, right? Well, yeah, the law is clear on that.
Actually-
Do you wish to respond?
Iris Miranda, also with Assemblymember Gilbert Sadio's office. Thank you. We are actually, something that happens with some sports figures that have come out here. One gentleman in particular, a member of the L.A. Kings, was arrested. He bought a car, soon as he got his first check, and was arrested, did not have a driver's license because he was unable to do that.
I understand.
The reason that the social security number is implemented in this law is back in 1994, when the law was enacted, there was a lot of questions about child support, and it was enacted in order to be able to have a record of the person with their social security number at DMV. If a person does not pay their child support, the DMV revokes their license immediately. Also, it's used for the franchise tax board. If the person has not paid their taxes for the state, their license can also be revoked.
All right. Is the social security number required now?
Yes, currently.
All right. And then what this will do is say, you leave a space for social security, but it's not a requirement to have a social security number. Is that correct? And for that athlete who came here, the team should have told him that you need to have a driver's license. Sure, you can play baseball, you can play hockey, you're a sports figure, but you got to have a driver's license to drive. They should go through some kind of a-
Sure. Councilman, if I could respond to your point-
Please, sir. And I just want to say that if there's a reason for it.
Sure.
That's why it's in place, and that this time, we need more information on people coming into the U.S., not less. And since, I got to tell you, that's how I feel. And for that reason, I cannot vote for this measure. Maybe a week ago, two weeks ago, I might have voted for it, but not today.
Let me share on a couple points, Councilmember Holden. First of all, back in -- and I'll be frank. The first time it was revoked, for the whole history of the Department of Motor Vehicles, it was never a requirement. It was in the times during the Wilson administration when there was a lot of xenophobia, anti-immigrant sentiment going around, that this bill came about. I will be very frank and clear that it wasn't just about child support and AFDC issues. And that was the impetus for that bill. People now realize that it was a mistake. And even with the license issue about the current events that happened, I will say this, and maybe the assembly member when I get back, he'll hit me upside the head for saying this, but that's part of my job. Timothy McVeigh, the Unabomber, had a driver's license. It was not the driver's license that forced them to wreak havoc on our citizens or this country. And for anyone to say that a driver's license will cause terror, it's just plain absurd.
Oh, I don't think it -- wait a minute, wait a minute. I take issue with that. I did not say that. And don't suggest that I did.
I didn't suggest that you did, sir.
All right, you -- wait a minute. I'm saying that we need more information, not less. And be mindful of the fact that when the law was first adopted, you had a majority Democrats in the Senate and in the Assembly, and they voted for it, no matter who was the governor. So -- and every community was well represented when it was put before them. So come on, you just lost me on that one.
And the information, to your second point, there will be provided information because they will be able to track people who have identification.
Mr. President-- The public comments over--
Mr. Holden.
Public comments over. So the fact of the matter is that I -- we worked together before, and to suggest that anyone here would say that a driver's license would keep Timothy McVeigh from blowing up something or that would cause someone to blow up -- no, no, no. That's not the issue at all. I'm saying, these are tough times. We need more information, at least I think so, not less. And if a person comes into the country, they can get a social security number. And that's all we're talking about. Get a social security number, you can get a driver's license. I see -- I really see nothing wrong with that. You don't have to work, just get a social security number. You don't have to have a job.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Zine.
I know Gil Sadio, he's a lovely, wonderful assemblyman, and I think that he needs to teach you a little diplomacy when you speak with council members and a little respect.
I apologize, sir.
Because Councilmember Holden was a state senator, and he's well-informed on every issue that comes before us. Does the Department of Motor Vehicles support this legislation, DMV?
Well, they're waiting for direction from the governors. Let me--
How about the California Highway Patrol?
The California Highway Patrol is not supporting at this moment.
Why?
There's really no reason why they're not. We don't have an answer to that. We're working on getting their support. We have the Police Protective League that's supporting us right now at this moment. The City of Sacramento Police Department is also supporting us. The Chief of Maywood Police Department is also supporting the legislation as well.
Now, what is different from this bill compared to the bill that wasn't signed? What modification, what amendments have been made from the previous legislation that didn't pass to this legislation? As I understand, you can go out anywhere where they have fictitious identification, and you can get a fictitious social security card, you can get a fictitious green card, you can get a fictitious driver's license. I mean, those are not difficult to obtain. The concern I have on identity theft, which is becoming a major problem in our society, is someone walking into DMV and saying, "My name is Dennis Zine, and this is the information." What verification? And I don't put a lot of credence in the social security card in and of itself. Someone walking into DMV and saying, "I'm Jack Weiss," what other proof is there going to be, other than the person saying, "Who I am, and I've applied to immigration for resident status?" I mean, do we have any safeguards for identity theft, other than the person going in and saying, "Here I am"? Is that included in here, or is that part of the DMV philosophy? Because I think the concern is that we license people to drive a car, make sure they take the test, make sure they have insurance, safeguard society. But at the same time, with identity theft as such a concern and problem, and we're saying, "No social security card," what are we asking them to provide, other than their name, which they can make up and everything else?
Well, some of the questions that you asked, just to be -- I'm going to try and be brief with it, but--
But we'll be here all day, so it's okay.
Okay. In terms of what kind of identity the person has to provide, these people are, first of all, not undocumented immigrants. They are in some sort of legal process. The federal government knows that they are here. Now, the State of California implemented this law in 1994 in order to require legal proof that you're here as a resident. It required that you show a social security number. And what happened was that that has been going on for the last 12 years. And what we have now is, we're not trying to take away that. What we're trying to do is let immigrants that are in a process be able to qualify. So these people, the federal government knows who they are, they know where they live. However, they don't qualify for a social security. The type of people that would qualify are the temporary protective status, people that are here under INS, also people that are under some sort of petitioning process through a family member that are citizens. These are the type of people that qualify, political asylum people are also people that qualify under this program.
Okay. Let me ask you this. I interrupt you for a moment. I'm a DMV clerk. You're coming in for a driver's license. What do you have to present to me so I can make the process go through?
Well, first of all, they would ask you for a social security number. They'd also ask you to fill out an application, and it would require an affidavit on there that you are that person. You have to show also some sort of form that says that you are the person who you say you are. In some instances, it could be a birth certificate from the country of origin of which you're from, a visa, something that shows that you are Dennis Zine in that -- for that example. And they would require that proof. Now, just so you know, the social security number is not going to be revoked. We're going to continue to have that on there because we realize it's necessary for child support reasons, also for the franchise tax board, to be able to keep the cycle on you where you're at. And we're also going to have that affidavit signed under penalty of perjury that you are that person. Now, once the person has completed their citizenship process, and they are here legally and have a green card, they must return to the Department of Motor Vehicles and, once again, apply and show the social security number that they now have as legal residents or as citizens of the United States.
And what protection do we have as a motoring public because of fraud and people who want to come in and assume other identity? What provisions are in this bill and this legislation to safeguard the rest of us from someone assuming my name or your name or anyone else's name?
The social security number and the taxpayer ID number are key to the not having the fraud being -- happening to anyone. This is also a concern that the governor had, and these are some of the reasons that why the documents we presented today are -- were established in these amendments. This is something that the governor's been working on. He is very concerned with ID -- identity fraud, and that's something that we are addressing in the amendments that were done and are going to be given to the governor. And we understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. If I may before calling upon the next speaker, ask Mr. Karsh to come forward. Not for necessary comments at this time, unless you think some would be helpful in this discussion. But Mr. Karsh was a part of the CLA presentation to committee this morning. You've heard the questions and the concerns raised. If there's anything you wish to add at this time that would be of help for the council, please do so. Otherwise, colleagues, please know Mr. Karsh is here to answer your questions as well. Mr. Pacheco.
The -- Mr. Zine's points about identification theft are well-taken if the target audience -- and I don't want to sound insulting here, but if the target audience was really geared towards that sophisticated crime, I mean, that is not an easy crime. It is one that generally is entailing not only identity theft, but you're really trying to get out some financial gain from the identity theft. What we're talking about here are people who are in the process of becoming citizens, so we know they're here. We want to make sure, and this is what I was trying to answer Mr. Holden's question, was this is actually going to give us more information about this person in the event -- and this is where, Mr. Zine, you should really be concerned about, in the event that they are involved in any criminal activity. Because we will have their thumbprint, and we'll have their photo digitally on record, which could be matched to any other database, whether it be the FBI, Department of Justice. If the thumbprint is inadequate because of the new technology that we -- I raised in my earlier presentation that was used during the Super Bowl, in terms of imaging faces and comparing those for warrants, this will assist in any sort of investigation. So it would provide us more information on this individual. But that's not what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about individuals who want to be part of the system, who have identified themselves to the federal government, who want better-paying jobs because they're going to get a license so they can drive, and that can be part of their job duties, who want to become Americans. And this is an opportunity to give them a better life, at the same time, provide us public security because of the other benefits that we see in this identification. So I would urge your support in terms of this resolution, because we do need to increase our public safety, and I believe this would move us in that direction. And please understand that this has a three-year limit on this license, that they have to get through that process of becoming citizens. This is important to the Latino community, especially the immigrant community, and we really need to bring everyone into the fold, and this is one step in doing that. So I would urge your support and ask for your support.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually rise in support of this as well. And again, I'm trying to remember the basic focus of this bill, and this is, again, those who are wishing to become citizens, who are here anyway, like you said, and many of them actually are driving while they're not licensed or insured, and that becomes, I think, a problem for every one of us. I know I've been involved in an accident with an uninsured driver, and that clearly just -- it's a difficult process to go through. Bottom line, it really increases the rates for all of our insurance premiums. So, I mean, this is a good bill, but Councilman Pacheco, you just said something that, again, really, really convinced me that this is important, with the idea that many people are unable to get good-paying jobs without a driver's license. And I have been made very much aware of this in my own district with the $2-point billion-dollar Alameda Corridor project, which attempted to outreach to residents all along the corridor, provide those good-paying, good-training kinds of jobs. Many of those people who live within the corridor were unable to get those jobs because they did not have a driver's license. And that really has -- even though I was already supporting it, that, again, reminded me of why I believe this is an important bill, and I appreciate the assemblymen for pushing this. I think it's a good idea, and I plan to support this motion today.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. The chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Well, right now, we're debating this issue, and I spoke with the state officials and representatives, and they said they would be amenable if we were to continue this on Friday, to allow us for more discussion and get clear answers. I would like to go in that direction. But I wanted to listen and get a response from the author, which is Councilman Pacheco. He's not at his desk right now. Should we just hold this until he gets back?
Well, we also -- Mr. Holden would like to speak again, but is that a motion to continue with the concurrence of Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, and I'd like to get an answer from him, but he's not at the phone.
We'll hold that motion then.
All right, I'll second his motion.
All right, well, the motion is made. We'll now call Mr. Holden. Oh, Mr. Garcetti, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. You're right, Councilmember Holden. We do need more information. I 100% support that, and I think this is the way to get it. I think this is yet another place where we can actually gather information, have it, and bring people into the system, instead of having them be somehow outside the system, which is unsafe for each one of us. Councilmember Hahn mentioned that. I would also tell Councilmember Zine and others, think about the three states where this has been implemented. You might think, well, some liberal state out there, maybe Hawaii or Vermont or Maine, has done this. It's Tennessee and Utah and -- that's the third one -- North Carolina. Those are the three states that have tried this. It has been successful. I think if those three states can do it, we can certainly support it here in California.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Holden.
Didn't Tennessee vote for the president? Let me just say that I'm shocked, startled by the representative from Mr. Gil Sadio's office insinuating that I would say that the guy with a driver's license can go out and commit that kind of havoc on our society. I think, I guess you're emotional, and you've been fighting for this for a couple of years, but I'm not your victim, and I'm not your problem. And, you know, you've known of me a long time, so don't take out your anger on Nate Holden. You understand what I'm saying? Right, and I think that it got a little carried away, I think. Don't you think so?
I apologize, Councilman. I apologize, Councilman. I didn't direct it at you. I was emotional, and I meant it in a broad sense, not directly at you. And I publicly apologize.
Thank you very much. I will then support the motion to continue until Friday.
I was simply going to ask that we vote on it today. I believe we have the support of our colleague, Councilmember Zine. I reassure them that this is not to in any way open the door to fraud. This is about people already in the process, self-identified to the government, and giving them an ability to fully complete their participation as they go through that citizenship process. So it's not open the door to fraud. So I just want to get this vote today. I believe we have the support.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, in light of that information and given the discussion we're having, I'd like to withdraw my motion and do it today.
Any other members wishing to speak? Mr. Holden.
Right. And since we're going to vote on this today, my concern was that we don't give up the information that we require in order to maintain a tight security program for our nation. We have been lax, and there's been an influx of undesirables in our country, in our country. And we not have clear evidence what they've been able to do to harm us. My primary concern. Now, you're saying that by relaxing this requirement, this law, gives you additional information that you would not otherwise have. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Pacheco?
That is a fact, Mr. Holden. If we go on the premise that you started on, that there are people using fraudulent documents, it's in the government's best interest to eliminate the fraudulent documents and get them on our database. So yes, from that perspective, it's in our best interest to get that thumbprint, get that digitized image on our database versus having them out there with fraudulent documents, whether it be social security, driver's license, or any other sort of document that they can pick up in some parts of the city. So yes, from that viewpoint, I believe we get more information on the individual so that in the event, unlikely event, I believe, that there is some reason to find that person, we have that resource.
All right. Mr. Zine.
Councilman Holden, I think we share genuine, legitimate concerns. Hit and runs are a major problem, fraudulent driver's licenses are throughout this country, and particularly in our community, along with other type of fraudulent documents. I know with CAL ID, which is the state system, on a thumbprint, CAL ID can run an individual and find out who that person is. And I think what Councilman Pacheco brings forward is the fact that we can capture more information when they go down to DMV and get it. This is not going to license undocumented individuals. This is going to, if anything else, assist law enforcement in capturing people if we want to run something through CAL ID, and the state has that operation in place. I understand the mayor sent a letter of support, the Police Protective League has sent a letter of support, the Police Protective League being the members of the LAPD. I'm concerned about fraud, and that was the conversation I had with Councilman Pacheco. He's resolved my concerns on that. And while I know we can go out and find a social security card, which doesn't have anything other than a name and a number, and you can obtain that anywhere, and to present that to motor vehicles and say, "Well, here I am," I think it will enhance-- enhance law enforcement operations. My concern is still about fraud, and I think that that's still gonna be a concern, but when someone has a license, they'll be able to get insurance, which will impact a lot of society. I know this whole controversy about licensing, licensing undocumented, that's not what I see this bill as. People are in the process. It gives us law enforcement, government, more access, information on people, which in this time of crisis is probably more beneficial than adverse. So I will lend my support to this, this bill, this legislation, and hopefully other law enforcement will resolve that issue, that it will be beneficial for our society instead of adverse.
Ms. Han.
Actually, Councilman Zine just reiterated the mayor's position. I did not know if everyone knew the mayor's position, and that was just him on the phone telling, reminding me that he had sent a letter of support to the governor for this legislation. So I want to make sure we all knew that the mayor is supportive of this as well. But thank you for mentioning that, Dennis.
Mr. Pacheco to close.
I would simply move the previous question.
No other members are waiting to speak on this item. So Special Two is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special Two is adopted. Thank you very much. Forthwith to the mayor on that. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, item number 30 is a confirmation of Kim Thompson to the Environmental Affairs Commission.
Colleagues, we're back now to confirmation of commissioners. Please come forward. Has a public hearing been held on the appointment of Ms. Thompson?
No, Mr. President. This has been waived by EQ Committee.
Okay, and I do not have cards for members of the public wishing to speak, so we shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Are there any members wishing to speak? Mr. Zine.
Environmental Affairs. I commend you for your patience in sitting in that seat since, what, 9:30, 10 o'clock this morning? Think how we feel every day. I know your activity in the community has been very vigorous. I know your concerns about the environment. We had one meeting, not regarding this, but regarding other issues of environmental quality within the San Fernando Valley. I know your passion for it, and I welcome you here. I didn't know you were up for this position, but commend you, welcome you, and hopefully you'll be confirmed without any problem.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for your patience.
Sure.
Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations, you're confirmed.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Item number 33 is confirmation of Kenneth L. Ashford to the Affordable Housing Commission, and this item was also waived by committee. Public hearing has not been held.
Public hearing has not been held, but I don't have requests from members of the public to speak or ask questions, so we shall deem public hearing open and closed. Any members wishing to speak? Mr. Zine.
Once again, someone else I recognize and know. Ken and I went to school together for a period of time, a wonderful representative from the San Fernando Valley, very committed to the community of Los Angeles, and I would recommend our confirmation for Ken and his wonderful efforts.
Mr. President, I need to clarify something. I didn't go to school together, Mr. Zine, although we went to a leadership training program together.
Did you teach Mr. Zine everything he knows? Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, and thank you for your patience. Next item, please.
Item number 34 is a confirmation of Stephen Zand to the Police Permit Review Board, and this is a communication from the Chair and Member of Public Safety Committee. A public hearing has not been held.
Public hearing has not been held. Believe we do not have requests from members of the public to speak or ask questions. Any members wishing to speak? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of my friend Steve Zand. I've known him for a number of years, and I think he'll do a great job. One thing I just wanted to ask you in light of some things that have been in the news lately, for instance, the special event that was held in Hollywood where there was not police permits given, and there was a bit of an incident. What sort of ideas might you have in putting together some sort of system so that we can review concerts and the way that they're publicized and hold folks accountable for the public costs when they sometimes get out of hand and police are called in?
Mr. President, Councilmembers, thank you for your question. I think all one can hope for is to bring professionalism and integrity to the panel, and with the benefit of hindsight, when a permit has been approved, I think maybe there has to be closer communication with the Police Commission and the council to, to maybe have a review to see for the future events how we can change the regulations so in the future these things would not happen again. But you have to function within the confines of the statutes as far as the permit panel. That's not, I don't believe that's in the discretion of the members of that panel to make such a decision. All we can do is bring it before you, this body, and ask for potential amendments.
It may be something that you look at with the commission, with the panel, you know, it's something that we're doing in our office to look at, and I know working with the CLA's office, but that may be a further place to have some public hearings and some discussions.
Ms. Sikowski.
Although I sat as a chair, or as just the chair of the committee, and other members were not able to join me, I did meet with Mr. Zand and interview him and find him very, very qualified to hold this position. I also, as Mr. Garcetti has indicated, another area that I think police permit review is appropriate and comes to the interaction with the city council and our constituents is in the area of adult entertainment. And what falls under planning, conditional use process, and then those that are exempted and go only and singularly to the police permit, and the need to be sensitive to and listen to the community is critical in this particular panel. And he indicated that he had the right view relative to that, the right concerns, and I was happy to recommend by way of communication his confirmation, and I move that communication.
Thank you, Ms. Sikowski. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, approval of the commission nominee is before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. It's a hearing regarding the Hollywood Entertainment BID.
We have cards on item number one. Let's go through the agenda. Let's call items with cards special and come back to those after going through the agenda.
Okay, Mr. President, then items one, two, and three all have cards.
We'll call those special.
Next items, excuse me, next item. Item number four is an ordinance second reading regarding a limited-term retirement plan.
We don't have cards on item number four. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Any members wishing to speak on item number four? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item four is approved, and we do have 10 votes on that item.
Item number five is a hearing regarding Biden District, and the council should continue the hearing and open the hearing and continue the hearing in ordinance to October 10th.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on item number five and continue that until October 10th.
Next item, Mr. President, items seven through, well, seven, eight, nine, and 10. Item number 10 has a card that would be, seven, eight, and nine are building and safety confirmation of assessments.
Items seven through nine are before us. No cards from members of the public. Public hearing should be deemed open and closed. Any members wishing to speak on items seven through nine? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Items seven through 10 are approved.
Item number 13 also has a card on that. Wish to call that special.
We'll call item 13 special. Item 10 is special also.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 20 through 27. The other items have been, already been acted upon.
Items 20 through 27, was there a previous request to continue item 27?
Excuse me, yes, Mr. President. So that would be items 10 through 26.
Items 20 through 26 are now before us. Public hearing has been held on these items. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Forthwith on item 22, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 30 through 68. There are no, well, there's a card on item 45, and also there are amending motions on the special events items 53B, M, and M has a substitute motion, and 53N. Do we should take those separately, or do we should vote on those all at the same time?
Are the amending motions for the special events technical in nature?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, then without objection, we shall adopt those technical amendments.
And also, there is a substitute motion on item 66. Do you wish to call that one special?
Let's call 66 special. Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti calls 47 special. Any other specials? Mr. Zine calls 62 special. Any other specials?
Mr. President.
Mr. Pacheco.
I simply wanted to, instead of calling it special, move to receiving file item 59.
Request to receive and file item 59. Without objection. Madam Clerk, what remains before us?
Items 30, excuse me, item 20, 36, 37, 39, 40, 42 through 44, 46, 48 through 52, item 53.
As amended.
As amended. 54 through 58, 60 and 61, 63, 64, 65, 67, and 68.
That's a mouthful. Any other specials? Should we make her say it 10 times real fast? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are adopted. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number one has cards from the public.
Item one has been noticed for public hearing. There are a number of cards on this item. The council calls forward Chris Vonbright to be followed by Samuel, is it Gorin? Mr. Vonbright still here? I believe he's left. Samuel, is it Gorin or Gori? Goret, he's also left. Heidi Urbina left also. He's left also. Danelle Dadigan. We got a winner. She'll be followed by Jose Malagon and the representative of the Hollywood Entertainment District, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and councilmembers of the City of Los Angeles. My name is Danelle Dadigan. I'm the owner of the Historic Max Factor Building in Hollywood and president and founder of the Hollywood History Museum. We are here today in support of the Hollywood Entertainment District, the Business Improvement District for Hollywood. I must tell you that when I first came to purchase the building in November of 96, it was a very difficult time for me. I could not receive funding from my own bank because the area was so rundown and there was no positive future. But thanks to the Business Improvement District and all of the continued efforts from the ancillary work as far as cleanup, security, community involvement, and participation in the bid, the whole outlook for Hollywood community, as you're all very well aware of, has changed and has improved for the better. But we still have a long way to go, so I'm fully in support of once again having the Business Improvement District fully reinstated to Hollywood. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jose Malagon to be followed by representative of the Chamber and the Entertainment District, and Jeff Ruse.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Years ago, my partner and I purchased a building in Hollywood on Cowanga Boulevard in a kind of deteriorating part of the neighborhood, as most of Hollywood was at the time, and we set efforts forward to clean up our area, and at that time, the bid was being put into place. And with the efforts of the bid, the area was turned around and is continuing to turn around. And as DeeDee said, we've gone a long way, but we still haven't completed our, our goals and tasks, and we act, we urge your support so we can continue in all the efforts that we've put in place so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. No name but a representative of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, Jeff Ruse and John Gibbon.
Mr. President, councilmembers, my name is Jeffrey Rowles. I was the project manager for the historic renovation of the El Capitan, and I was one of the founding members of the Hollywood Entertainment District. And I was also one of the initial board members of the Hollywood Entertainment District, and currently I'm a board member of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and the Hollywood Historic Trust. And I don't think we want to go back to the day of 1994 and the conditions that were on Hollywood Boulevard and the Hollywood Entertainment District and its safe and clean model have made a huge difference in the renovation that is currently going on in Hollywood and the investment in new projects. And without the Entertainment District, we wouldn't have any of that, and so I'm here to support that. I'm also here to say that I'm the last one of the, of the cards everybody else has left. Thank you.
Okay. Has John Gibbon left us also? Believe so. This closes the public hearing on item number one. Any members wishing to speak on item one? Mr. Garcetti.
Very briefly, colleagues, because we've heard this before, the second reading, I just want to reiterate my support for the bid. I think it's done extraordinary work. I look forward to continuing that, and so I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item one is approved. Next item, please.
Item number two also is a public hearing item, and there are cards from the public.
Council calls forward Misty Iwatu to be followed by Gabrielle Woods.
Hello, Mr. President and esteemed councilmembers. I am before you today to ask you to approve the Highland Park Business Improvement District. As a stakeholder of Highland Park and president of the Highland Park Community Development Corporation, I urge you to let us empower ourselves so that we may improve the North Figaroa Historical Business Corridor, in which at one time was a thriving and appealing place for commerce and now is currently an eyesore and an economic drain on the investors of Highland Park. Assist us by improving the Highland Park Business Improvement District in once more making North Figaroa a historical shopping destination in what was once part of Route 66. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gabrielle Woods, please.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. I'm Gabrielle Woods, and I am the Executive Director of the Highland Park Community Development Corporation, and we are a nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality of life in Highland Park. And as former recipients of both Lonnie funding and TNI funding, we have helped administer a couple of million dollars of infrastructure improvements in Highland Park over the next, over the last four years. These improvements include streetlights, tree plantings, a wonderful facade program, as well as small business development loans. And now it's the time for the property owners in our area to step up to the plate and help leverage this public commitment into bettering our community. The services that will be provided under the bid include security and, what is the word I'm looking for? Security as well as promotions of Highland Park as a desirable place for business and residents. And so we do urge you to support the implementation of this Business Improvement District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing on item number two. Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank the community members, the people who are dedicated to heart and soul in trying to improve Figaroa, and we are making progress. And I truly believe that with the BID, we can continue that momentum. There's a lot happening in Highland Park. We have the Light Rail Station on Avenue 57. We have the facade improvement program. We've got new sidewalks, got great trees that change with the season, so this is going to continue in that whole effort of improving that corridor. So thank you for being here and spending a day with us. So, thank you for being here and spending a day with us and your patience. I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any other members wishing to speak on item two? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. We received a request to send item 46 forthwith to the mayor. Without objection, we shall do so. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number three is also in the public hearing section, and that has cards from the public.
Colleagues and members of the public, item three is now before us. We will proceed with the public hearing on this item, but let me announce—I've been advised by the city attorney that there has been a slight error in the text as item three appears on the agenda, so we shall open and conduct the public hearing today, but we will have to continue item three to Friday's meeting for proper listing and notification. The council calls forward V. Gore, to be followed by Joseph Grundy Jr.
Hello, Mr. President and members of the council. Before I start, Mr. Grundy did yield his time to me. I should be on the card. Property owners are entitled to accurate information that is presented in a comprehensible manner. We should not have to rely on persistent, skillful cross-examination of ESIS representatives to be able to obtain accurate answers to the questions we have posed. The design of the ESIS project and the manner in which the city has dealt with the affected property owners of Blair Hills is unacceptable. Without my knowledge and concurrence, ESIS representatives have trespassed and accessed my property many times to view the property, to photograph my home, to perform inspections, and even, I believe, to mark my private road with existing utility locations. In addition, inaccurate and incorrect statements and certifications are made in the appraisal report and other documents concerning the ESIS easement. Further, the appraisal has not been prepared by the independent disinterested party. The property appraisal that has been prepared for the ESIS sewer easement is by an employee of the L.A. Department of Public Works, Real Estate Division, therefore not an independent disinterested party. In addition, this individual is not a member of the American Society of Appraisers and does not contain the—does not hold the appropriate specialty designations. And as such, there are issues with the appraisal and the appraisal report and various documents. There are issues with the highest and best use analysis, with valuation, severance damage. There are easements—issues with statements in the proposed underground easement deed. Further, the dissemination of this easement information and documentation and various appraisal documents has left much to be desired. The appraiser, quote unquote, also states that his valuation was based on the Norris Project. The Norris Project had a very unsatisfactory result in Blair Hills. Ivy Road sank, and the house on the corner of Ivy and Perham sank and continues to do so. There is further issues concerning the routing of the ESIS sewer. Originally, Blair Hills was led to believe that the ESIS sewer would not be routed under the homes of the residents. This, of course, is now untrue. At previous Blair Hills Association meetings, the ESIS project manager was requested to revisit the routing of the sewer, and this past spring, the ESIS project manager was requested to reevaluate the routing of the sewer so that does not clip the corner of my property and other properties. And this could be done by modifying the bend in the sewer pipes. If the bend was implemented, the sewer would not only bypass my property, but that of other property owners as well. On August 1st, the ESIS project manager, the principal construction inspector, the risk manager, and the public relations firm met with the affected Blair Hills property owners, who haven't granted the easement, along with the president of the Blair Hills Association. And we were told that modifications to the bend in the sewer could not be done because if the sewer were rerouted in such a fashion, then two other undisclosed properties would be impacted downstream. However, no drawings were presented.
If I could ask you to conclude, please.
I—Mr. Grundy—
You have the combination—the combined time. You have about another minute or so.
Thank you. During the discussion, we—it was determined—or it was stated that the routing indeed can be modified, but ESIS is unwilling to change the routing because the sewer pipe parts have already been ordered and are being built. There's a better solution to—the is to bypass Blair Hills altogether and route the sewer through the uninhabited oil fields. ESIS rejected this threat danger due to unknown locations of old oil wells. Well, this is extremely interesting because just last year, in June of 2000, 15 months ago, the developers of Vista Pacifica were granted a permit to develop the land and to construct over 230 homes, over the portion—which would be located in what is currently deemed by ESIS to be unacceptable oil fields just south of Blair Hills. As part of granting the Vista Pacifica permit, the County of Los Angeles reviewed the geological reports and the soils reports provided by the developers. Los Angeles County geologists found these oil fields to be safe and acceptable for a new housing development, which includes installation of sewers, water, electricity, gas, all below ground. So how can ESIS now claim that that same exact area is unsafe for routing the new sewer line?
Thank you.
What the city council needs to do today, at this meeting, is to direct that the ESIS sewer be rerouted such that none of the Blair Hills property owners be impacted.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing on item number three. Any members wishing to speak on item three? Mr. Holden.
I think the residents from Blair Hills make a good point. Obviously, the routing of the ESIS line was not clearly thought out, and they did not expect any negative impact or real major opposition if people were not properly notified until the time they started drilling, and that's why they're here. And even worse than what you're talking about, just 50 feet from where I sleep at night, they discovered they're going to interfere with the water line. And I told them they couldn't put it there in the first place. They said they could. I said, "You also have a flood control channel going there, and they're going to have a problem there." "Oh, we won't." And the council just rammed it right through. Well, they didn't just ram it through. They just took the advice of their experts. And experts don't always tell the truth. Mr. Deaton was here then, is here now, and he didn't tell them to stop it. They did it. And now, you know what they have to do? Since they're going to run interference with that water line, they're going to raise the water line right near my house, take three or four or five months to do it, put a new five-inch, five-foot diameter line at an elevated rate—at an elevated height. Can you imagine that? And close down the streets. They have to turn the water off. Metropolitan Water District will have to provide us the water. If their line goes down, we don't have any water in that whole area. That's not good planning. But the fact of the matter is that—I don't know what to do about it now, except try to stop the project until they can come a fix to it. And that's where I'm leaning. If you look at La Brea and Rodeo, they've got like a drop-off station, all those big pipes out there, diameter, dust. People living in the back of it, and they're saying this is not the proper use for that site, that property, and it isn't. They plan to be out of there 90 days, and 90 days have come and gone. We have some major problem with that. We will review that project, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. I think we're just stuck with this at this point in time. I tell you what you can do. There are obviously going to be some lawsuits. If you end advantage, disadvantage, or inconvenience in any way, and your quality of life has been, you know, substantially diminished in that general area, then you can have an opportunity to file a claim, and I will support you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item three. We're going to continue till Friday at Mr. Holden's request. I'm sorry. The city attorney's advised to—
Mr. Chair—
Continue to item three because of the language appearing on the agenda?
Well, I think that—the—in looking at this again, I think that the council could vote on this because the notice is correct. The description of the item is just what they're requesting the council to do was—it should say, instead of "for temporary construction purposes," it should say "for permanent subsurface easements," and it's under the same government code section, and the description of it does say "subsurface easements" in the body of the text. So I think the council can go ahead and vote on it today.
Okay. Mr. Holden, the city attorney is advising us that we can't vote on this today. Is that okay with you, or did you wish to make any other motions? Okay, so colleagues, item three is before us at this time. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item three is approved.
The ordinance will go over a week in either case.
Mr. Holden wishes to be recorded as a no on that item. Goes over either way. There's not 12 members here. Next item, please.
Item number 10 also is a public hearing item, and that has a card from the public.
Item 10, notice for public hearing. We have a couple of cards. Council calls forward Mark Angelo Crouch, to be followed by Nancy A. Crouch. Go ahead.
So I just want to make a brief announcement. The Plumb Committee will be conducted at 3:00 instead of 2:00 for obvious reasons, so it'll be at 3:00. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Crouch.
Yes, my name is Mark Carl Crouch. How are you doing, Mr. President and members of the city council? What I'm here to do is object to this situation that's going down with my mother's house. And the reason why I'm objecting is, I don't know nowhere in the law where you can go in somebody's house and take everything they own and throw it away and say it's trash and then charge them and barricade their property up and put them out, make them a homeless person. My mother's 79 years old, as most of you members can see, and she is homeless behind this situation right here, you know, where the city just came in and threw everything in her house, everything that she ever owned, everything that she can imagine that she had. They just threw it away, you know, and then told her, barricaded her house, and then told her, "Well, you owe us $15,000." When she have a son that's a journeyman carpenter, that's myself, and a grandson that's a journeyman carpenter, that we can repair the house, but you got barricades and a fence around this house that I feel is not necessary. And if it's by any chance with the city council or whoever that we can get these barricades moved or whatever, put a lien on our home or whatever, where I can just get my mother's house back to where it was at, you know, because I don't like to see my mother living in the streets, which I know neither one of y'all would like to see your mother living in the street after she worked her whole life to attain something, and then y'all just come in and just take it, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Crouch. Does Nancy Crouch want to speak?
Yes, she do.
Okay, let me call her.
Hello, I'm Mrs. Crouch, and that's my property. I worked hard, paid for it, raised with eight kids, and I wasn't on no county. I worked eight hours a day, raised all eight of my kids there. My husband died and left me. He was a baby, four years old, when his father passed. And I can't see why. Christmas and April was fixing my house, you know? That's something all over the United States that they do. And somebody put a bomb last Thanksgiving. Somebody threw a bomb in there. Why, I don't know. And then, my kids up north and grandkids, they came and got me because they didn't want me upset, and they thought someone was out to harm me. He came and got me and brought me back down here because he tried to keep them from fencing my place. And he was saying, "Mother, you don't love me," but my kids and my family in Monterey, California, they were getting together to come and do all the things that's supposed to be done around my house. And all I have to do is call them, and they will be down here and do all the things, but they told them no, that they couldn't. But my family is willing to do things for me. And he is my baby, and he is in construction. I have a grandson in construction, and they know how to do and repair things for me, and I don't see why they want to keep it locked up to keep us from going there and put the fence around it. They didn't get my permission to fence it in, and I want to know why.
Okay, Mrs. Crouch, let us try to get that answer for you. That concludes the public hearing. Is the staff present on this?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Andy Héros. I represent the Department of Building and Safety. Miss Crouch's house was determined to be substandard. The drywall ceilings were removed, part of walls were removed. The electrical service was disconnected from the wall and leaning, very hazardous. There was a fire there. There was trash and debris all over the yards. She was ordered to leave the premises due to the substandard state of the buildings. Her other son, I believe his name is Perry, came and removed her from the property, and because the property was open to vagrants, the department determined it was a good idea to barricade and clean it. There was also schools and schoolchildren going by the property on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Han, this is in the 15th district. I don't know if you want to make a motion or—
Yes, Mrs. Crouch, I appreciate you coming down here today. I was wondering if we could continue this item and—for two weeks and get more information about this and learn a little bit more about how the Crouch's were notified and see if we can come to some resolution about this.
Okay, there's a motion to continue the matter for two weeks. Any objection? Then that will be the order, Mrs. Crouch. Councilwoman Han's office will meet with you in the department—
Thank you.
—to work on that. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 13 called special, inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Okay, we have a number of cards on this item. Let me begin with calling Jim McQuiston.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the city council. Jim McQuiston from the East Hollywood Community Association. I'm very disappointed in this Wilshire Plan, the way it worked out, because there's an awful lot of NIMBY that went on in this. We have an area which has been designated by the housing plan as non-white, and it seems like all of the things that—the evils of this plan have been visited in that area, and they've been shifted because people in the other areas complained, and I don't think that that's right for the city. So I'm making this mention of disappointment. I've given you all a written precis on this. I think we can do better. We've taken out all the parks. Where are the people going to play? We haven't made any provision for schools because we're building this all up our 4 to 45 feet. There's not going to be any room. And we have some beautiful houses in this area. People have fought like mad to keep the school system from taking them, and here, we're just going to sell them all out, and it's all because they live here. Please, let's go back and do it again.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. Next speaker will be Laurel Silvanis.
Hi, my name is Laurel Silvanis. I'm a resident of Crescent Heights Boulevard in the 5th District Council. I want to address the issue of Crescent Heights Boulevard from Olympic up to Melrose is currently designated a secondary highway. In November 14th of 2000, a motion was passed by then-councilman Fuer unanimously passed by the city council and to make Crescent Heights a collector's street and to implement safety measures along that street. We have very large issues about traffic accidents and safety. At that city council meeting, there was no objection from the planning commission or from the Department of Transportation. Since that original designation, nothing has been done for the Crescent— Since that original designation, nothing has been done for the residents of Crescent Heights. And when we went to a Planning Commission meeting to get into the Wilshire Plan to have Crescent Heights designated a collector's street, the DOT and the Planning Commission then objected to downgrading to a collector's street five months after the motion was passed, saying that they had to keep it as a secondary highway because changing it to a collector's street would preclude them from widening Crescent Heights. I would like to say that at this point in time, after that language has come out in May of this year, the residents of Crescent Heights, I don't believe our councilmen, no one involved in this, has received a single solitary piece of paper, note, word, diagram or anything explaining their action, explaining why they want to widen the street, how they plan to do it. And this is an issue that is separate now from the safety issue. We've been told by DOT that we cannot get safety issues installed unless we're a collector's street. Now they're telling us they want to widen our street and we are saying we need a collector's street. And obviously, the citizens who live along Crescent Heights do not want to become a major highway and have their houses torn down. So we'd like some clarification and we'd like the motion to be carried out as it was instructed to be carried out in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Pam Schmidt.
Good afternoon. My name is Pam Schmidt. I'm an attorney at Jeffrey Mangles Butler &amp; Morrow. We represent the owners of what is listed as subparcell 940B and we're, I'm here to say that we support the Wilshire Community Plan, excuse me, as it was amended at the Plumb Committee to provide that the height restriction on that parcel will be measured as provided by the building code and not from the sidewalk as previously provided. Without, we support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And final speaker on this matter is Jeffrey Fader. Is Mr. Fader here? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing. I don't know if there's any member of the Planning Committee who would like to speak on this, or members of the council, or if we need a staff. I see the Planning Department here to respond to some of the issues that were raised in the public testimony. We ask the staff to come forward.
Good afternoon. Kevin Keller with the City Planning Department. I guess I should just respond to some of the comments made. The Wilshire Community Plan was last adopted or created in 1976. That's the current plan on our books. And the Wilshire Community Plan update process started in 1997. Since then, we've had 40 focus group meetings, five workshops attended by approximately over 300 people, two open houses in 1999, two additional open houses and two public hearings in January of this year in which we mailed out over 35,000 notices. We worked very closely with emerging neighborhood councils, community groups, and all five council districts that this area represents, and did work very closely with the community to come with our proposals. We, after the public hearings, at Planning Commission, there were some recommendations made to change. The Planning Commission and staff prepared and responded to that and that's the proposal you have in front of you today.
Okay, let me now call Councilmember Weiss.
President, and I respect the work that everyone in the Planning Department has done. I know you've put in a lot of hours on this, as have members of the council and there are many members of the community as well. I share the concerns of the people who live on Crescent Heights that their street ought to be at least eligible for consideration for certain types of traffic calming measures. There will be arguments pro and con on these sorts of measures, but they ought to be options that are on the table and that's why I believe we ought to redesignate it as a collector's street. Now, I had been inclined to oppose this plan, but I think that's probably not the best course at this point because what we can do instead is offer an amendment. And I believe the Chairman of the Transportation Committee, Mr. Burnson, has indicated previously that he'd be in support of that. The current Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee has indicated that he would be in favor of that. And so I will proceed along that track to get that amendment enacted just as soon as we can. Once that is enacted, then it would be as if the current plan that's before the council today would have had in it a redesignation of Crescent Heights from a secondary highway to a collector's street. So that's my understanding of the state of play. If I'm wrong about it, please tell me. Otherwise, it's my intention to get that redesignation just as soon as possible so that we can start talking about what types of relief are appropriate for the folks on Crescent Heights.
My name is Charlie Roush, Planning Department staff. The community plan update that you have before you, if you enact it, will have the further amendment to take Crescent Heights down to a collector's street. The passage of the plan update will not have any effect upon that. It'll just be considered another amendment to the community plan at a later date. This will not affect that in any way.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Yes, I just wanted to see if you can just give us the time constraints, what are the time constraints we're dealing with in passing this plan?
Because of a change in the city charter, we now have 90 days from the date that the mayor signs off on the plan amendments. If there is no action by the City Council, the plan amendments are deemed denied. Usually, if there's no action, previous actions are deemed approved. In this case, it's denied. So if we don't have an action by, I believe, the 24th, then this action would be denied and we'd have to start from scratch.
Actually, the agenda indicates that the last day for the council to act is September 21st, Friday. So the whole plan...
Correct, 21st, right. Because of the way the dates...
Right. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Mr. McQuiston for his testimony. I think I share some of his hesitations, but I do want to say that my own planning deputy, who's not an easy person to please, was very pleased with the work that the Planning Department has done, and in particular, Kevin. I think that the work that you've done has been very highly praised and we look forward to working with you in other places in the 13th District. I think part of the difficulty, Mr. McQuiston, if I may address a couple of your concerns, is that, at least for me, there's two things. I don't want to see us segregate away density. And I think it's important for all those council members who don't have as dense districts and 13th District is the densest in the city, as the one that I represent, that we share this density. And here is clearly an opportunity in which, to a large degree, we've missed that. But there happens to be, I think, a decent reason this time, which is because we do want to cluster growth around transit corridors. We have to have them to have Vermont and the Red Line. I think it's a healthy place to get people out of their cars and to have that sort of development. Let this be sort of something that we all work on in the future, though, that we make sure that we think of transit corridors, as my predecessor Jackie Goldberg used to say, not just as the Red Line, not just as light rail, but where there are places like the 101 going through parts of the valley. And we have to all share that burden of growth. To ask those districts that are in the urban core to shoulder growth, I think, is irresponsible. We have to go up throughout the city, not just in the center of the city. Nevertheless, I do have just as strong as a principle that we have to have growth around transit corridors. For that reason, with some of those hesitations, I do support this plan, but I thank you for that input, Mr. McQuiston, and I look forward to trying to implement that larger vision for redistributing a bit of our citywide planning with all of you.
Thank you. That concludes those who want to speak on the matter. We now have before us the recommendation of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee and the resolution. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten ayes. Thank you. That matter has passed. Madam Clerk, next matter.
Madam President, there's a request on item number 62. That was called special by Councilmember Zine and he's requesting that be continued one week to September 26th in as much as staff is not available at the present time.
Is there any objection to continuing item number 62 for one week? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Next item, Madam President. Item number 45 was called special. There are cards from the public.
Okay, I will call the speakers who have submitted cards on this, if they are still here. Next speaker will be Mary DeBlasi, after Lois.
Thank you, Madam President and the rest of the members of the council. My name is Lois Newman and I am president of the Cat and Dog Rescue Association, which is a California nonprofit, tax-exempt animal organization. I'm also an animal activist. I'm coming before you today on this issue because I believe that you have been misinformed and not told the entire truth about this issue. First of all, I'm also a certificated paralegal and I work in animal law. There are two specific cases in the state of California where breed-specific legislation has been ruled unconstitutional. It has been ruled unconstitutional all over the United States. The 14th, there is a United States Supreme Court case on the use of the 14th Amendment, the right to due process, and a personal property. Dogs are considered personal property. And the United States Supreme Court has said specifically that any time you deal with personal property, there must be hearings before having, though, that property confiscated. Each individual case must be considered individually. There is an article in the June 1st, 2001 Journal of the American Veterinary Medical Association from their Task Force on Canine Aggression and Human Canine Interaction. One paragraph here says, "Which dogs bite?" An often asked question is what breed or breeds of dogs are most dangerous? This inquiry can be prompted by a serious attack by a specific dog or it may be the result of media-driven portrayals of a specific breed is dangerous. Although this is a common concern, singling out one or two breeds for control can result in a false sense of accomplishment. Doing so ignores the true scope of the problem and will not result in a responsible approach to protecting a community's citizens. Dog bite statistics are not really statistics and they do not give an accurate picture of dogs that bite. There are a lot of other things I could say, but I don't want to take your time. But I have here a picture from the Monday, Los Angeles Times. This is a male German Shepherd dog that is altered by the name of Ammo. Ammo is a search and rescue dog who is at the World Trade Center. You see him here because he worked steadily for three days, 16 hours a day, and was near collapse. There is a mobile veterinary clinic there. He went to the veterinary clinic. He was treated, wrapped in a warm blanket and is now, was here, is here sleeping with his handler besides. Breed-specific legislation would not allow us to have dogs that are search and rescue dogs, dogs that are guides for the blind, dogs that are hearing dogs for the deaf, dogs that are what they call service dogs for those, for people who are disabled. This breed-specific legislation is a piece of mean legislation. And I warn you, we're already getting a legal team together. We will be lobbying every legislature, every legislator in the state legislature and we will defeat this because it is not in the interests of the dogs. Remember, the dogs are not the problem. People are the problem. The majority of dog biting dogs are, A, male, unneutered dogs.
Ms. Newman, we do have a number of other speakers I would like to...
Well, I just have one to finish the sentence. Are male, unneutered, chained up, untrained, obedience-trained dogs. And it's people who cause that, not the dogs.
Thank you. Ms. DeBlasi? Next speaker will be Kathy Reardon.
Good afternoon, Ms. President, members of City Council. My name is Mary DeBlasi and I am the president of the Pet Outreach Project in Los Angeles. Section 31683 of the California Food and Agricultural Code is the breed-specific preemption as spoken to only in California's Dangerous Dog Law, a preemption that has been upheld in the appellate courts of our state as well as the United States Supreme Court. The language of California's Dangerous Dog Law does not speak to licensing, permits, containment, abuse, or other factors which are needed in this city. Therefore, backed by considerable legal precedent, I don't believe that there is a need to repeal this section of California state law. Although we are often at odds, I will state that the Department of Animal Regulations in Los Angeles has for the past few months been aggressively working to establish protocols to identify dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs within the LA shelter system that will eliminate their adoptability to the general public. They are supported by state law in this endeavor. Additionally, January 2002 is targeted for consideration of special requirements for owned dangerous dogs and potentially dangerous dogs as defined by the department. This will not only apply to the bull breeds but also to any dangerous dog as it should be. Currently, the city of Santa Monica, the County of Riverside, and many other municipalities have local mandates, policies, or protocols dealing with muzzlewing, leashing, fencing, and other requirements pertaining to just bull breeds. None of these are preempted by the breed-specific exemption of the California Food and Agriculture Act because the language of that bill does not speak to these specifics. Again, I think that any further discussion on this matter should be directed to the Animal Regulation Commission, the LA Department of Animal Regulations, and the city's Attorney's Office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Reardon and the next speaker will be Joan Lux.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Reardon. I'm coming just to request that this item go through Public Safety as well as Animal Services for further review before you consider passage of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan Lux, and then Rabindra Buzdeho.
Good afternoon. My name is Joan Lux and I'm a board member of Animal Alliance. I also would like to request this goad before the Public Safety Committee. I understand that it has been before the Intergovernmental Committee because it's legislation, obviously, citywide. But this is clearly a public safety issue. It came to the Department of Animal Reg when they were on recess. They did not have adequate input into this. The public has had no real notice. I ask you that to have public input from the public safety, a real hearing that will allow a broad base of input with people that have the experience to do it. Specifically, on the issue itself, we have to have the people that own the animals responsible. It's not the animals' fault, besides which it'll completely wipe out my house. Irrespective of that, we need to educate the owners. It is not the breed that is the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lux. Rabindra Buzdeho? I don't see her here. We have two cards also that were submitted in support of the legislation. Phyllis Doherty? Ms. Doherty, would you come forward?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I believe that you're very timely in addressing this issue right now. We'd have a different situation. 10 years ago, when the prohibition against breed-specific legislation was enacted, we did not have a situation where everyone had heard how much money they could make in dog fighting. We did not have a situation where entire neighborhoods are held hostage deliberately. This is not an irresponsible animal issue. This is deliberate and intentional criminal activity in which the dogs are the weapons. They are no longer considered animals. We can no longer work with a one-size-fits-all idea on dogs because the pressa canario that's come out, this is the flyer that's being distributed, she touts in here the fact that this dog is guaranteed to act according to its game bred line and its game bred line is its father, Bane, that killed Diane Whipple. It does not mean that all dogs of any breed are bad, but it does mean that we're dealing with an entirely different element of animal safety and human safety that we have not ever had to deal with before. There's no reason to take away the rights of people in order to ensure public safety and we know that. The dogs have rights, the owners have rights, but the victims have rights and now we're having far too many victims. I just want to address to you that, as I said, that it is not, it is not a matter of irresponsible owners. That's not what we're talking about. It is not a matter of training. It's the genetics of these dogs. And Mrs. DeBlasi especially knows that, being a breeder of small dogs, that every dog has its own lineage and its own way of innate. of small dogs, that every dog has its own lineage and its own way of innate behavior. That is not changed by training. Last but not least, the people will say that the dogfighters will get another breed. They will not. There are unique characteristics in these dogs. This needs to be directed to these people only. We have adequate rules for the irresponsible owners. This is a criminal act, and we need to be able to address it as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. The final speaker is Tia Torres. She had to leave.
She had to go pick up her child, and we did ask that this not be delayed.
Okay, thank you. Then that concludes the public hearing on the matter. Members of the council, is there anyone who wants to speak on this matter? I think we need a motion on the matter. This was a communication from the chair. Yes, Madam President. Any motion on the floor? Mr. -- Ms. Hahn.
Do we need a motion to, if we want to refer to Public Safety?
Yes, there needs to be a motion to take any action. We have a communication from the Chair of Intergovernmental Relations, and I'm not sure, Mr. Padilla, if that was you or whether it was conducted with Mr. Holden, but any motion would be...
We need a motion to have communicate...
To take any action.
So moved.
You're moving.
Another thing, Mr. Garcetti.
And, Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I was acting chair at the time of Intergovernmental Relations. Mr. Holden was not there. We've discussed a number of things, including the possibility of amending this so that it would not specify banning, but would allow regulation. It would prohibit banning, but would allow some regulation. In light of a number of things that have been brought up, I think it's appropriate to have that discussion to figure out whether that is something that would work for all parties here. I think that we do have to take action on this nevertheless. It's not, there is a public safety concern which I think everybody out here shares. I fear, I never fear having more information, so if we, if we have that in public safety, I think that's an appropriate place, and be happy to continue to push forward to making sure we can have some, some regulation, but perhaps not the banning may be the right route to go forward. So why don't we refer it to Public Safety?
All right, we have Mr. Pacheco who would like to speak.
I just have a simple question, Madam President. If we're repealing this, if the city's taking the position to repeal the state law, does that simply move this decision or this regulation to local jurisdictions? Because we're not introducing legislation. So is this one of these, I get the feeling that this is one of those actions to move the decision-making away from the state level to the local city levels. Is that what we're doing? Because that's what it seems like we're doing since we're not introducing any local...
The initial resolution was to allow a change in state legislation that prohibited local government from making a breed-specific regulation. And I think what the people have spoken to today is the issue of, I think the breed-specific regulation that was being pursued was an ability to ban a specific breed.
Is that pending for our council? Is that something we have in motion, or...
No, this is, this is at the state level to encourage that to happen at the state level for greater flexibility on the local level. But that's all that it does at this point. So, and I'd put a 30-day time limit on reporting back to council on this, too.
So the question I have for when it goes to committee is very simple. Is this a removal of preemption of local jurisdiction? And if it's simply that, then I'll have a different analysis versus an actual debate on the merits of whether or not we're going to do some banning or a regulation or...
It is a removal of preemption, but the question is the specificity of how far we want that preemption removed.
Right, whether it's to ban or regulate.
Well, for someone who believes in home rule, I think the more, the better in terms of having us as a body locally decide what's in the best interest of the city of Los Angeles. But I will leave that for committee discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to send this to Public Safety Committee and report back within 30 days. Mr. Holden?
Right, it's rather unusual, but this is something you wanted, and I'm going along with it. But it's unusual that we would give the state any more power. You know, we don't want to do that. If we have a problem here locally, we're going to fix it. And if we can do it very easily here at a local level, rather than get the state to do it once we decide that they have the power. If you've got a problem, then you have to go to them and get 41 votes in the assembly, 21 votes in the senate to get the governor to sign it. That can really take, be time-consuming. But what you really want is to have absolute control so you can fix it, and that's what you can get. And I'm sure that'll be discussed in that committee, Public Safety Committee.
Okay, the matters before us, open the roll. This is to continue for 30 days and send it to committee. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ice.
All right, that matter is sent to committee, and we will be reported back. What remains on the desk, man first?
Next item, Madam President, item number 47, call special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to hear from staff, and if I can retain my time, to ask some questions about the status right now of where we're at with the negotiations.
We're still in contract negotiations, in part because of some of the conditions added by the council and the committees through the process. Incorporating that into a contract is taking a little more time than I anticipated. We had, we had talked about 60 days going in, and then there was a whole series of things that were, during that process, that were included, and just trying to get a handle around.
So this is to be able to extend negotiations with Infinity DooCo, and, and right now not have the obligation necessarily to then start negotiating with Adshell? Is that correct?
Right. In fact, there is a meeting in this, won't include me, but I think there's a meeting going on right now.
Do you know, what is, if you can state it in this form at all, what has been some of the holdup around?
There's, partly the limitations of the kinds of advertising that were, the council didn't want, and the financial implications of that, and how we adjust for that in the, in the final contract. And preliminarily, I wasn't comfortable with the information actually being supplied today with considerably more information about the numbers and the, and it was just, I didn't, the numbers didn't add to me.
What sort of extension are we looking at, time-wise?
The first part of November.
First part of November. I don't know if my colleagues would join me in this, but I would definitely like to communicate through you in the negotiations that we, we do take this contract very seriously. If they're not prepared to meet some of the city's demands, we're ready to move on to a different vendor and begin those negotiations, so.
I'd make that crystal clear to them.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine?
I just have an announcement that Information Technology General Services will meet sometime before sundown.
Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ice.
Back to negotiations for you, Mr. Deaton. Next item, please.
Item number 66, call special. A substitute motion has been distributed to the council members.
Okay, any members wishing to speak on 66? We have a substitute motion before us. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. The reason I'm introducing this substitute motion this afternoon is this is in regards to truck traffic in one of my communities, Wilmington. And the original motion talked about putting up barricades for a DWP project that was happening to make sure that there was a decent detour and that the trucks in the port area followed that route. The DWP construction project has now been completed, and those barricades will not be necessary anymore. However, in their place, I would, I feel that's important that we make sure that the flow of truckers coming in and out of the port of Los Angeles continue to follow a legal route and don't continue to go through neighborhoods in Wilmington. So I'm substituting this motion that asks for signage that's posted off the exit of the 110 freeway, designating the truck route to go onto Harry Bridges Boulevard. I would also, as a part of this motion, like to request that LAPD increase its enforcement of that restriction so that we really can crack down on illegal truck traffic in the community of Wilmington, which seems to suffer more than any other community with that kind of illegal truck traffic. So I ask your support on the substitute motion.
Mr. Zine?
Just a comment regarding the LAPD enforcement. LAPD does have a commercial enforcement unit, motorcycle officers that are strictly assigned to go after the illegal truckers, the 18-wheelers, et cetera. So I would just direct that that go to the special enforcement unit within LAPD for that assignment.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, we have a substitute for 66 before us. Please open the roll on the substitute. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ice.
66 substitute is adopted. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on the agenda of the council's jurisdiction.
This is the public comment period for today's meeting. Before I call up the first speaker, Mr. Pacheco, did you wish to be recognized?
Simply for an announcement before we get to the public comments, we're not going into executive session, so budget and finance will be at 3:10.
Okay, everybody can hear that. Council calls forward Louise Manuel to be followed by Mr. John Williams.
Yes, my name is John Williams, and I came before the city council members concerning matters that never been taken care of. This matter concerned the enforcement of laws against officers engaged in violation of the law. This matter also concerned my daughter who want to be with me and being forced against her will. And this also concerned future references to the poor concerning different types of help within the community, I mean fraud upon the homeless.
Okay, the law prohibits us from actually acting on items brought to our attention during the public comment period, but I do believe we need a representative from the city to speak with you.
Well, I mean by later future, I mean I'm going to be videotaping with more peoples inside the court, given to the US court.
Okay, we can have somebody speak with you if you need more information or to help you. Thank you very much. Was Ms. Louise still here, or has she left? I believe she has left. This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting.
Excuse me, who I supposed to see?
We'll try to get somebody for you. Next item, please.
Motions, excuse me, we have motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
Council has excuses on this. Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused from today's meeting. Personal business meets council policy.
Mr. Burnson is excused.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused. September 26, city business meets council policy.
Mr. Pacheco is excused.
Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused from this meeting. City business, a motion is required.
Mr. Zine moves, without objection.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, September 21, October 5, and October 12 for city business. A motion is required on all those dates.
Mr. Reyes moves, without objection.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Everybody, please stand. Colleagues, this last week certainly has been a long and trying week for not only us in Los Angeles, but for the entire country. We're blessed here in Los Angeles to have been spared any direct incidents or attacks, but I'm sure as we continue to share our experiences and our stories that we're feeling the impact through our extended families and friends, I believe it's appropriate today for us to adjourn in memory of all the victims from the numerous incidents, the victims that we know of, and those that we have yet to discover. I know also that not everybody here has had a public forum in which to share some of the sentiments and feelings that we all share, and I thought it was appropriate today to be able to go around the horseshoe and have everybody say a few words. Mr. Weiss?
I know that many of us have been talking about this in private with our families, with our friends, since the moment we first learned of this over a week ago. And I know that all of our hearts and prayers go out to the victims, to the victims' families, to their friends, and to the people who are, who are going to move on in New York and move on with their lives. I just wanted to share two things with you. One was the other night at Rosanna Services, I ran into an old friend of mine, a doctor, and I asked him how he was doing, and he said, "Jack, I've, I've cried a lot more in this last week than I have since I was a child." And that about sums it up, I think, for most people that I know. The other thing I wanted to share is that as a, as a parent of small children, it is very, it's very sobering, it's really very depressing to think about the prospect of having to raise children in a society where we have to worry about these sort of things, where they will have to worry about these sort of things. It's really very upsetting. I know it's something that upsets many parents around the city and around the country. And for that reason, it's just so important that all of us use this as an opportunity to do everything in our power to secure our city and to make it as safe as we possibly
Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity. I said most, I think, of what was on my mind when we had our four managers before us. But I am also reminded of, of freedom which we don't really write down in the Constitution, we don't have in any of the international human rights treaties, but is probably the greatest freedom we have, and that's freedom from fear. And when Franklin Donal Roosevelt spoke of the four freedoms on the verge of our war, World War II, he mentioned that first and foremost as our greatest freedom. And I think that I would echo what Councilmember Weiss said in terms of our responsibility structurally in giving people that freedom and making sure that it's there. But the other part, which is where we come to bat as symbolic leaders, and where each and every one of us, whether council members or just in the, here or watching on TV, that we have a responsibility as parents, as other people, to make sure that on a psychological level that we don't live in fear. That is us losing already before the battle has begun, and we have to be safe, but let us not be afraid.
Thank you, President Padilla, for allowing us this opportunity. Clearly, what we have all witnessed this week is the worst of humankind, but clearly we've also seen the best of humankind. And while none of us could have imagined the images that we saw on TV in terms of the evil and destruction, I think we were also not aware of the incredible acts of heroism that we were also able to see. And while many people ran in fear for their own lives from ground zero, there were many heroes in that city that ran directly toward the danger to see what they could do to help and to rescue, and ultimately lost their lives. I call on all of Angelenos to remember, remember the acts of heroism, and in the face of this kind of hatred and evil that we respond to each other with compassion and tolerance, and that we do not succumb to any sort of hate crimes here in the city based on what we assume to be a person's background, or ethnicity, or the way they look. But we clearly find this an opportunity to come together. And I hope that we, as a city council, will continue what we did this morning by starting every one of our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. And I also hope that we do more of also holding moments of inspiration and reflection and prayer, because I think that's what the city and this country needs now more than ever.
I suppose I'm somewhat in a state of disbelief, but what happened is real, not imaginary, not a dream that we awaken to. As the water runs and the fire burns, that's real, what has happened. The fact of the matter is that, as been said over and over again, our hearts go out to the families of the victims, we pray for them, that they have strength and courage to carry on. I will say, however, that after saying, having said that, the next thing come dem... I will say, however, that after having said that, the next thing come to mind is, how do we get even? I mean, I can't think of a person who has not thought of retaliation. As Ms. Hahn says, you've got to show some empathy and compassion and concern by people who look alike, certain ethnic groups, religious. That's what the country is founded on, freedom of religion. That's your choice, and they should not be retaliated against. But at the same time, I think we have to search them out, those that are foreign and those that are domestic, those that are here and those that are not here. That's just my belief. We have some heroes, many of them are heroes. I saw a program, and I think of the individual who sent the message to his wife, who says, "Now I know what their mission is all about, I'm not going to let it happen." And you know, he's a man after my own heart. I would say to you that there are those who among us will show more courage, even when they're threatened, than when they're just sitting about talking about it. They arise to the occasion, as we've done in the past, will do in the future. And I'm so proud to know that America, our country, is going to be in good hands with the youth. They've demonstrated that. I had some concerns about it. But now I believe that they will carry on in the future in the tradition of home of the free, land of the brave, and they'll defend the USA. I like that. And I'll do my other adjourning motions after they finish.
I would just like to echo the comments of those who talked about the heroes. And what I was struck by is not only the heroes from those where we might have expected it, even in face of incredible odds, and those were the public safety members, but what I was most struck by were the heroes in ordinary, everyday Americans. And I think that was so important for all of us to see, because this attack came on us despite those things that divide us, whether it's our partisan politics, our creeds, our religions, our races. This attack hit us all, struck us all. And I think it couldn't have been better expressed for me when I read a German leader who said that he was remembering when John Kennedy had come and galvanized everyone by saying, "Ich bin ein Berliner," "I am a Berliner." And this German leader said, "Today, we are all New Yorkers. And we strive here in our government to create community, to create connection." And I think that the greatest sense of goodness in this country came out by that sense of community, that sense of wanting to be one with another that we have seen. And it's that spirit that I would like to capture and continue, not only in our city, but in our country, and as we conduct all of our business.
Mr. President, colleagues, we've all, in one way or another, been touched by this tragedy. I want to spend my moments talking about one of my constituents who was on flight seventy-seven, American Airlines. His story is a tragic one, not only in the sense of being a part of this incident and this attack, but just the circumstances. Ruben Ornedo is thirty-nine years old. He had just been married in June of this year, and had purchased his home in Eagle Rock four months ago. His wife, Sheila, who's survived by his four months pregnant with their first child. And Ruben was working in Washington, D.C. when this was happening, or before this happened, and he had a two-day sort of gap in work. So he decided to rush home to see his wife. And it was during that, making that decision, that he ended up on that flight. He was born in the Philippines, came to the United States with his family, when he was in grade school, graduated from Fairfax High, and was a computer engineer, received his degree from UCLA. He liked to travel, he was athletic, he was fond of hiking and mountain climbing. He is survived by his father, Dimitri, and his three brothers, Eddie, Renee, and Mario. And obviously, our hearts go out to Sheila, his new bride. Last night, I spoke at a eulogy, and I focused on the one thing that really struck me about this whole tragic situation, was that Ruben was acting out of love and wanted to be with his wife. And I basically call on everyone to really focus on love and think about what you can do for your neighbor, your community, people who you may not know in your neighborhood you want to meet. And that way, we don't run into any sort of unnecessary or misguided discrimination, harassment of people who we don't know, who may look different, who may be different. So I would just simply ask that we look inside and find that place where we can share our love with our neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I reflect back on the week before and the horrific impact on all of our lives, I thought, what can I do? Obviously, give blood, say a prayer. Then I got an email last night from a friend, and it was an interesting message written by an Afghan-American woman, and it talked about the potential for war and the impact it would have on her former countrymen. And what she pointed out is what war, how war has an impact on people who are also innocent even within their own country. And she talked about how she deplored the Taliban and the things, the crimes that they had committed upon their own people. And she talked about the impact of war on women and children, women who were fighting for the right to be educated, for the right to be able to just go out of the house and, you know, go anywhere, and that their freedoms had been denied. And she understood how we in America might feel. And she made an interesting suggestion, and this is what I wanted to share, is that as we move forward as a governing body in the city of Los Angeles, we have voices too, and we can communicate with our congressional representatives and our senators. And if the country proceeds towards war, this woman made a very interesting suggestion, which was focus on the perpetrators of this horrific crime. Don't, basically, don't kill us too. That's her basic message. Be strategic, be focused. And she ended it with focus on ground operations. And it's something so simple, and yet, you know, we take it for granted. So I would call on my colleagues, if we proceed the path that may have already been set, that we should also make our voices known to those who represent us in Washington as to how we feel.
Colleagues, this incident has hit us at many levels. I think about ourselves and the pressures we go through as council members, those of us who are civil servants who come to City Hall, and the impact that has on our families. My daughter asked me, "Do you have to go to work? You could be targeted." She's thirteen. And she's asking about these things in such a way where there is a real deep fear. My ten-year-old son asked me, "Why go to war?" I told him, "No, don't worry about it, it's not going to last that long." But the fact is, is that these are in the minds of children now. So as leaders of our city, to step forward and be strong is going to be very important in the next few weeks. But another level, what I found encouraging was, I read this editorial from a Canadian, and he spoke to the fact that when Europe was burning during World War II, who stepped up with the United States? When the East Coast, should I say, the South Pacific Islands were being burned down after World War II, who was there but the United States? Who has paid back their debt in those world wars? And it's been the United States that's been there. So it was, in an odd way, reassuring to know that international scene, we are being viewed in a way in which we are an international community. But here, as a city, we reflect in international society, so our voices do have that kind of a relationship with our world. So let's just be strong.
Mr. President, colleagues, it's hard to believe that it's been a week and a day since the tragic events took place. And I recall that morning, I was driving up to Sacramento for the California Leagues of Cities Convention. I know many of my colleagues were going to fly up to Sacramento. And I was listening to the reports on the radio, horrifying reports. I turned back and came back to Los Angeles. And when you think of war, you think of our brave military, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard. And you think of casualties of war, you think of military personnel losing their lives. And then there's civilians that lose their lives. And then when we find the carnage that's taken place, and the people who have pictures of their loved ones, who are hoping that they'll find them alive, or if not alive, their remains, so they can have a burial, a decent ceremony, a reflection of their lives, they don't even have that because of the tragedy that occurred. We look at our firefighters, we look at our police officers, heroes, who faced that challenge, and those that have lost their lives rescuing people. We think of the victims here in Los Angeles, since those planes were headed for Los Angeles, the victims impacted, as Councilmember Pacheco commented. I have a constituent in my district, pregnant lady whose husband perished in one of the crashes. And now we find our city family calling the battle cry due to the reserve call-up, and many of our city employees will be called into active duty to protect our society, our country, our liberties, our freedoms. We ask that people fly the flag, show patriotism, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And may God bless those who have perished. May God bless us all in this time of crisis.
Thank you, colleagues. We will do adjourning tributes in a minute. Just wanted to add one thing, because many prayers, many thoughts have been conveyed to the victims and the families of the victims, not only of the plane crash in Pennsylvania, but also New York, and also the Pentagon, let's not forget the Pentagon incident. But I believe it is also appropriate for us, as a council and as a legislative body, to keep in our thoughts and in our prayers our colleagues in New York, Mayor Giuliani, the borough presidents, and all the council members, as they are faced with the daunting task of rebuilding not only the buildings in the city, but the spirit of the city as well. Other adjourning motions. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, it's sad to announce that retired former city employee, Assistant General Manager, Department of General Services. He had been with the city for many years. His name is C. Lee Brown. I think most of you who've been around for a while know who he is. The service will be on the Saturday, the twenty-second. The location and time is being arranged. Survived by his wife, Helinda Brown, two daughters, Grace Brown and Natasha Ray, one son, Donald Ray, and four grandchildren.
All members on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, Annie Jo Robinson. She was a hundred and one years old when she passed away last week. She was very active in the George and Helen Thomas Senior Citizen Center in my district, and served as president of several senior citizens clubs, very active. Survived by three children, eleven grandchildren, twelve great-grandchildren, four great-great-grandchildren. Her services will also be on Saturday, the twenty-second, at eleven a.m., Holman Methodist Church on Adams Boulevard. Then, of course, Mr. President, unfortunately, and is a guy who entertained us all of beloved sports, Paul Tank Younger. He passed away last Saturday, September fifteenth, seventy-three years old. Mr. Younger was a running back for the Los Angeles Rams from nineteen forty-nine to nineteen fifty-seven, known for his pushing-running style in which he plod over would-be tacklers. He really did do that, too. He picked up the nickname Tank in college when the Sports Information Director said he ran like a Sherman tank. He finished his career with the Pittsburgh Steelers in nineteen fifty-eight, and later worked as an executive with the Rams and the San Diego Chargers. Mr. Younger and his family have been residents of my district for more than forty years. You would miss by all who knew him. Survived by his wife, Lucille, son Howard, two daughters, Harriet and Lucy. Harrietta and Lucy. Services will be held on Monday, September twenty-fourth, eleven a.m. at the First AM Church on Hollywood Boulevard.
Mr. Pacheco.
I just wanted to formally request that we adjourn in memory of Ruben Ornedo.
Others. Colleagues, also ask that we adjourn in memory of Socorro Romero, who passed away this last September fifteenth at the age of eighty-seven. In the Northeast Valley, she was affectionately known as La Señora de la Flor, which means "the lady with the flower." And I'll explain what that means in a minute. She's the daughter of Anastasia Sofia Uribali de Toral. She was born in nineteen fourteen, Socorro Uribali de Toral, in the Azcapo Salco community of Mexico City, Mexico. Immigrated to the United States in nineteen forty-nine with her husband and seven children. They purchased her home in Pacoima, where she raised their eight children eventually, in five generations of family, for forty-eight years. She was known as La Señora de la Flor because she would never leave the house without a colorful flower on her head. She lived each day to the fullest, was often the last on the dance floor at family parties. Since nineteen fifty-four, she was a devoted member of Mary Magdalene Church, walked three miles to Mass daily, rain or shine. She was a founding member of the Guadalupanos at the parish and remained an active member since then. She was also an active member of the Las Palmas Senior Citizen Club and a volunteer at Mend. She leaves, she's survived by her eight children, one hundred and eight grandchildren. We can't even count the great-grandchildren and the great-great-grandchildren. She will truly be missed. Well, I'm going to miss her personally. Every Sunday morning, she was always in the front row at Mass. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.